Stephanie, thank you for your notes. I figured everybody was reading my mind, so.
Did you say my vote, your vote?
Your notes, your notes.
You're welcome.
And I think everybody was reading my mind, so.
There you go.
I'm updating it for you. And everybody.
Vote too, that's.
Yes, you have my vote, Marty, three times in Chicago. Pizza on every table.
I'm starting to add people into the room.
Can someone say something so I can see if my headphones are working?
Hello, hello, hello.
Not working, okay, hold on. Thank you.
Allison, can you also see who's entering?
Yes.
We're gonna get started in just a couple of minutes. Just please remember to mute your microphone if you haven't already, thanks. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Can everybody hear me? Give me a thumbs up if you can hear me, okay? Awesome. All right, I'm calling the meter and back to order. It is open session. I'm just gonna make a couple of quick comments about meeting via Zoom, which is, one, I will, we're doing this a little differently than how we did our meetings in the past. So we do have forty participants currently. So I just really encourage everybody to try to remember to keep your your microphone on mute, please. I know we can sometimes forget. We've been doing this for a long time. We're all pretty seasoned at this point. But just to do that, please, that would be great to remember. And just if you see board members kind of looking off into the distance, like we're not paying attention. It's because we're looking either at our cell phones or another computer screen to look at the digital agenda on board docs. So we're we're paying very close attention, but I I do have a whole nother screen I keep looking at, so I'm not, you know, like watching TV on the side or anything. So I would like to first welcome our students from McCracken's GSA to do the land acknowledgement, which we're very excited about. So we have Gabriel Miller, Alice Gentry, and Mary Gabriel. So I will ask them to unmute themselves. And if you want to make sure you can see them, you can select speaker view. That way you're sure to catch them reading the the landing acknowledgements. And I would like to thank Tori Grumery from McCracken for coordinating this. So I will start with, so I'll let GSA do their business. Thanks.
Hello, my name is. Can you hear me? Hi, hello, my name is Gabriel Miller, and I will be starting the land acknowledgement. At Skokie School District seventy-three and a half, we respectfully acknowledge that we are on the lands of Sioux, Ho, Chunk, and Winnebago, Miami, Potawatomi, Peoria, and Kikapu nations. These nations were forcefully removed from their traditional territories. And these lands continue to carry the stories of these nations and their struggles for survival and identity.
As a public institution committed to building a mission for learning, leadership, and life, and educating our students to be critical thinkers who want to make the world a better place, we have we have a particular obligation to recognize the peoples of these lands and the histories of this session upon return to school's rest.
As educators, we recognize that by being silent, we are complicit in the ongoing oppression of indigenous people. And we take this for certain, fulfilling our responsibility to critically look at colonial histories and their present implications as we pay respect to the peoples of the land and the land itself.
Thank you so much. You did a great job, and we really appreciate you still joining us via Zoom. So well done, and thank you to the GSA for for reading our land acknowledgement. For all those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we are now at the public comment portion of the of the meeting. So what we're gonna do is, if we did not have any public comment, oh, let me make sure that's the case. I have one public comment to read. But first, before I do that, I will ask anybody who would like to make a public comment, please put your name into the chat. And I and I will call on you. We figure that's the easiest way to do this. So please write your name into the chat. And I will call on you. You unmute yourself. We have three minutes for public comment. And we do offer another public comment at the end of the meeting. So anybody who would like to make a public comment at this point, please write your name into the chat. All right, well, I'll give folks a minute if they want to think about whether they're ready to make a public comment or not. We did receive one public comment from Peter Hurley, and I just want to read this out loud. Hi, this is Peter Hurley. I just want to publicly say thank you to the board in School District seventy-three and a half for giving me the chance to work as the Buildings and Grounds Director for the last year and a half. As you all know, I have taken the job elsewhere and am moving on. I'm excited for the move. I do want to say that for many reasons, I felt that my job was in jeopardy the last few months, and therefore I had to take action. My offer to assist with the transition still stands. And I will reach out to the Board President with more details in the next few days. If anyone wants to contact me, I'm as always available by phone. Again, I really appreciate my time at seventy-three and a half, and it has never been my plan to leave mid-year. This was submitted on December seventh, twenty twenty-one. All right, I do not see any thing in the chat. Does anybody else on the board? All right, so we will move on. Hold on, I have to. Okay. Moving on, we have no correspondence, so I'm gonna move on to FOIA request. Dr. Hightower.
We had two FOIA requests. The first request was received from Smart Procure for purchase records, and we responded to that on December seventeenth. The second one was from Freedom Foundation for Employee Information. And we responded to that one on December twenty-seventh.
Thank you very much. Now I would like to move on to staff recognition. This is a time when board members can take a moment and share any recognition that they want to. So I will, I don't know, I can call on each individual member, I guess, or Maureen, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who was oh, my gosh. Sorry, everyone who was involved in our COVID vaccine clinics over the past month or so, that was really, really being there and seeing the ones in December, everyone was all hands on deck and really reflected our community, seeing the people who were coming in. So I'm glad that everyone worked together outside of the normal workday to help get our community safe. So thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. All right, all the board members aren't all clustered together. So if you want to make a comment, or just go for it.
I also wanted to echo the sentiments that Maureen shared. I was at one of the vaccination clinic days, and it was awesome to see all of the, you know, parents, staff, family members, community members come out, get boosted, get vaccinated. I think it was a testament to all the hard work that many people in the community have put in to have an offer a service as such, which I think was an immense privilege and honor that our community was able to do that. So it was inspiring to see, grateful to have been a part of it, and thank you to all that were, made it happen.
I want to send a shout out and say a special thank you to quite a few groups. First of all, I want to say an extra special shout out to like all of the teachers and admin and buildings and grounds. And everyone who was trying to keep this boat afloat with all the things that have happened as a result of the COVID surge. The fact that we were able to make it through the week that we made it through, and the new protocols you put in place for students. Your hard work does not go unnoticed. And everybody should appreciate all the work you've put into the year and definitely the return to school. I have a special shout out to to Principal Tamaru. I actually stopped by the building last week. I think it may be the first day back. And I was just there dropping off my kids' lunch, and just to see this woman run from one place to another, to another, to another, it was literally like watching a ping pong ball, trying to contract trace and and safely send students home and, you know, be cordial to parents and you know, she didn't have her running shoes. I mean, it was just amazing, and it's just a testament to how committed to making sure that our schools are safe and that our families are well taken care of. And as those children were transitioning out, that they still felt special and a part of the learning environment and that, you know, there was nothing that they had done wrong. So I truly appreciate watching that. I also want to say a special thank you to Samantha Peterson. For those people who don't know those unsung heroes behind the curtains that actually make a lot of things happen. Clearly, we all know we've had a hiccup this week. But, you know, one of the people that is working extra hard to make sure that that hiccup gets resolved, so we can go back to business as normal with Samantha, who was also new to our district. And for all the things that you never see, the fact that she came in, I want to say maybe in October, and I think that that's a maybe. Maybe in October, and she is, you know, plugging so many holes that no one ever sees. I just want to say thank you. Your work is appreciated, and it's noticed.
Is it all right if I go next, Emily?
It is, Carla.
Oh, thank you so much. I also wanted to echo the same sentiment as Kelly when she first started talking. I'm so amazed at all of the hard work that the teachers had put into the plans. I know you didn't have very much time to prepare. And honestly, I don't even know how you did it. And I continue to be amazed at the adaptability of the teachers in our district. So really, thank you so much for all of the hard work that you guys have done. And I feel like every month I also give a shout out to Dr. Hightower. A bit of a fangirl myself, Dr. Hightower has worked tirelessly through, I just, you were put in such turmoil, and thank you so much for all the hard work that you have put in. And then, lastly, Student Services, thank you so much for being so adaptable as well. I know you lost some people and bringing people on board, and it was just, thank you so much for making sure that my child still gets the education she needs in that part. So I really appreciate everything everyone's done this week. I know it's extenuating circumstances, but everyone has really made it work to the best of their ability. So thank you so much.
My last. So I, there are way too many people to thank, so I'm going to just go ahead and thank every single person that works for District seventy-three and a half. I also want to thank the children because they've had to really adapt. They've been trying really hard to wear masks, sometimes double masking, really distancing and following rules. This has truly been a team effort. And thank you, every single person that's been part of now disease mitigation in our district. This is not something that you are used to doing, and everybody has kind of jumped out of their role and their comfort zone and has really just rolled up their sleeves. I also do want to thank Dr. Hightower for getting the twelve and up boosters into the vaccine clinics. That was yeah, that was amazing. And I think, you know, my heart was pounding waiting for this for my own child, and I just would not be happier that I was able to just bring him in, walk him in. And for opening this up to our nearest communities, to opening up for everybody, because the truth is that we're all part of a large community of human beings that need to stay safe. So thank you so much for opening it to everybody else as well as our district.
Thank you, everybody. I will echo what everybody has said, although I do have a couple of shout outs that I wanted to give. One is to Ruth Sinker, who is, you know, you may not, she's sort of one of those behind the scenes people on our tech team, but is our communications guru at this point, and has been working tirelessly. So every time you get a text message or a robocall or an email or something's updated on the website, that's Ruth, and she's been working nonstop, coordinating with myself and Dr. Hightower. And I just really want to say thank you so much to all of that work. And I was actually saying to Dr. Hightower that I don't actually even know what Ruth looks like. I've like, everything's been so remote for so long. I was like, I don't even know who Ruth is. I would not even know her if I tripped over her. But thank you, Ruth, out there. I also wanted to thank Ms. Walbert, who I also haven't met. But when I was at the vaccination clinic at Middleton, which it was so nice to be in the building again, I noticed that her class had all done a big thank you sign for the Jose and put it on the boiler room, one of our janitors there. And I just thought, you know, it was really, I really appreciated that recognition that she, you know, got her class to write these really cute stickies and put it on there. And I just imagine that that really kind of made Jose's day. So I just, I think those little, you know, those kindnesses just go a long way in helping us get through this really just crappy, crappy time. And then finally, I have a brief confession. I don't think Mrs. Domingo is on the Zoom, but when I was at the Middleton, I stole her markers so these kids could use them, and I forgot to return them. So if anybody wants to let Mrs. Domingo know that I owe her some markers, and I will be dropping them off at her house this week, I'm really sorry. I felt so bad. I was like, she's gonna come to her class, and she's gonna think someone, you know, well, someone did come in and steal her markers, so I'm really sorry about that. All right, well, moving on. I also just want to say, like, I mean, we've been meeting in person at the school board, which has been really nice because it's great to see everybody, but no one comes to the school board meetings. So now we have like fifty-six people at a school board meeting, which is, it's kind of nice, you know, for them to see what we do. So thank you for taking the time to come to our school board meeting. All right, moving on to information items. Item A, Audit Presentation Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I am assuming that this falls under Samantha's in her wheelhouse, and she's dealing with this. Am I correct?
Yes, and we have our actual audit for representative here, so Sharon, I can't see you, but I know you're here somewhere.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I'll let you introduce yourself, and she's gonna do our presentation, so.
All right, thank you. Well, good evening. My name is Sheridan Jurgensen. I'm one of the partners at Eder Cassell and Company. And I oversaw the audit for this year. I just want to take a few minutes of your time and go through the results of the audit and a couple of things in the audit report. Before I do that, though, I just want to say thank you to Samantha and everyone else in the business office. We were delayed in starting the audit, just with all of the turnover, but when we got there, it was amazing. Everything was starting to get taken care of. We got all of our questions answered. They were able to find all the documents, even though they hadn't been there the entire year. And so it was, we really appreciate we were able to get the audit done a whole lot quicker than I thought we would be able to, just with the turnover. And so we just really appreciate their help with that. So I just wanted to go through a few things in the audit report. I think you have a PDF of it, so I will point out a couple page numbers. If you would like to go, by all means. If not, that's totally fine, too. But in the audit report on page eighteen of the PDF is our opinion letter, and that's really the most important part of the audit report. And it really, it talks in there about what we do as part of the audit, but the important part is we say in there that all the testing we did, everything that we looked at, that we felt the financial statements were free from material misstatement. And it's an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can have under accounting and auditing standards. And it also talks in there about internal controls, and internal controls are critical for any district, any government. And so it's something, we don't give an opinion on your internal controls, but we spend a lot of time looking at them. If there were to be fraud or errors to occur, it's going to be your internal processes that will catch that. It's not necessarily the external audit that will do that. So we not only look at your policies and procedures, but we actually make sure that people are following them, which is the more important part. And so as we went through, we would note any issues or any concerns we had. And what we issue is called a management letter, and we let you know about any of those concerns we had. And there was only one that came up in that letter, and I'll get to that in just a few minutes. But other other than that item, which has actually already been taken care of, there were no other significant issues that we found when we were reviewing the internal controls. After the opinion letter on page twenty-two of the PDF, this is called the Management Discussion and Analysis. And I would recommend as a board member, if you read nothing else in the audit report, I know it's not the most exciting document to read. But if you read any, if you don't read anything else, you reread that, it's really made to be just a narrative, kind of overview of the audit report, as well as what happened during the year, and some explanations on why those changes occurred. So I would definitely recommend reading that. And then after that, you get into the actual financial statements. And there's two sets of financial statements, which can kind of be confusing when you're looking at it. But starting on page thirty-one is what's called a government-wide financial statement, and I'm not going to spend any time on those statements. But they are more long-term outlook statements, so they have a lot of things that typically you're not used to seeing, but it's your pension liabilities, it's your, any long-term debt, fixed assets, depreciation, things that are more of a long-term item. And so that's what's in those statements. But then, starting on page thirty-three of the PDF, those are your fund financial statements. So it's showing your assets, liabilities, revenues and expenses for each of the funds, which is kind of more what you are used to seeing on a monthly basis, and what's kind of tracked internally. And the one thing that I did want to point out on there on page, I believe it is page thirty-three of the PDF, or no, like thirty-six, I apologize. This shows the net income or the net change for the year, and you'll see the total net change was four point five million for the year, but you'll see the majority of that is related to capital projects and the money that was transferred into there from the ad fund. What I did want to though point out, the second line from the bottom is a fund balance adjustment. There was a new standard that came out this year. All of your activity funds in the past have been shown on a separate statement within the audit report, and standards now have changed. And we now have to bring those into the education fund. And so you'll just see that there's the hundred and twenty-four thousand that represents the balance of those funds that were being brought into the education fund. Then the rest of the audit report, it just has a lot more information, footnotes and policies. There's some back, I think, about ten years worth of financial information and other information in there. The other thing that we did do this year is what's called a single audit. This is the first time the district has had it in many years. Just with all the Esser money coming in and the additional federal monies that the district is getting, we had to do what's called a single audit, which is a specific audit for your financial grants or for your federal grants. And so it's really just compliance, just making sure that you're complying with all the laws and regulations, the grant agreements, et cetera. And so we had no findings and no issues when we were doing that testing for this year. And I would anticipate you will probably have another single audit, at least for next year and maybe the year after, just depending on the Esser monies and when those are coming in. Then, as I had mentioned before, then there is the management letter, and I believe you have a copy of that as well. That's just where we list any issues. Uh, that's just where we list any issues, um, comments that we had. And so the one comment we issued or had in there was related to journal entries. And, um, so journal entries were recorded in the accounting system, but there wasn't really no approval process of those. And so, um, just with any internal controls, it's very important that there's always a second set of eyes on those, reviewing those, approving those, um, as with any other transaction. And so that's just something we noted, um, that did not occur during this last year. Um, actually, while we were out there for the audit, that was all addressed. And so going forward, that is not an issue and there's now approval process already in place going forward. So that's been taken care of. So that is a, just a quick overview. I will though, open it up if you guys have any specific questions.
Thank you so much. And I, I do want to acknowledge, um, the hard work of Samantha Peterson and the finance office staff who really stepped up. Um, as everybody knows, we've had a lot of transition happening and, um, they just really worked overtime to make sure that the auditors were able to do their job. So Samantha, did you have anything else you wanted to add before I ask the board if they have any questions?
Oh, I, I will say there were other two other little things that came up in the audit that weren't actual findings that we've already addressed. And I think it's important just to be transparent and to know about those things. And some of those were that we were, um, miscoding some of the equipment that we're purchasing, um, and what's called an object, um, 700 or 500, if it's capitalized equipment, it's over a certain price. And if it's, um, non-capitalized equipment, it's in between a certain price. Some of those things were being coded as supplies. And so we made the correction in the audit, so there was no actual finding or error. But we've also put internal controls in place already to make sure that that's not happening. And even just today, we worked on a Vex Robotics purchase where, um, everything was coded correctly. And those things weren't happening in the past. So I think that's really important to note. It was also a big team effort. I can tell you the entire business office staff, Karen, Kim, Nicole, all very helpful and very resourceful throughout this process. So we're lucky to have a strong team.
Thanks so much, Samantha. Um, so I'll now, uh, open it to the board if you have any questions.
Yeah. Comment and question. First, the comment is, I think it's a huge testament to all of the hard work that, um, the people in the business office has put in to have an issue come up amidst an audit and have it resolved shortly after. That's very impressive. So kudos to all of you for that. That's great to hear. But I do have a question about the system that was put in place. Was this like additional work put on someone else's plate? Was there like a new hire that came into it? Can I hear a bit more about this process that was, um, put in place to mitigate the issue that came up?
Yeah, um, just in all honesty, um, it was just my job to do. Um, there were steps that weren't being taken by the business manager to review and those internal controls were technically already in place. They were just not being followed. So, um, it, every invoice in the district is now signed off on by me prior to payment. Little things like that, that we have always known that we should be doing and just weren't happening. Um, I'm just making sure that I'm taking the time to do it and that, that comes directly from the work that I'll put in.
Great, thank you. And sorry, there's more work on your plate, but it sounds like you have it under control and it's, it'll be like on an ongoing basis, not at once. Yeah.
Yeah, it's actually pretty easy and the reward is the better we do, the, the more money we have to spend on our students when we do it correctly. So it's, it's fun, actually.
Awesome. Thank you.
Said one question, actually about the same thing. Um, not the same question, obviously. Uh, the approval process, is that something you look at every year? So had it only been one year that we did not have that in place or was that something you caught because of the, the type of audit you did this year?
Um, no, it would have been something that we would have, um, caught in past if there was an issue. Um, that is definitely one area that is a higher risk, um, just to make sure that someone isn't recording something or making adjustments to something to cover something up. Um, so yeah, that absolutely, that's something we would look at every year.
Okay, thank you, Sheridan.
Anybody else on the board have questions for either Samantha or, um, our auditors? Okay. Well, thank you. So, thank you very much, um, uh, to the auditing firm. We really appreciate all your hard work and explaining everything so well when we met. Um, it was really helpful, Sheridan, and thank you Samantha and the whole finance team, um, and Karen Hayes as well, um, in our, in our district office for putting in that hard work. All right, um, so we are going to move to information item B, Strategic Plan Presentation, Community Engagement. So I'm going to turn it, I'm not sure who's running that, but I'm going to turn it over to them.
Hi, this is Marty. I'm going to be running that so I can, um, I can share my screen, um, and introduce our community engagement, um, presentation, uh, for this year. First, I want to start by saying thank you for, um, giving, giving us the opportunity to present. Um, we know there's a lot of important topics on the agenda tonight and on people's minds. So we, um, appreciate the opportunity to kind of talk and tell you about our, uh, good work that we're doing. Let me present here so I can. Um, I first of all, want to start out by introducing our great team. This is, uh, just a really flexible and positive and fun team to work with, um, that I run with, along with Stephanie Lorenas. So, um, our team members are Kim Skurik, Kathy Lau, Martha Orso, Samia Sharif, Dr. Tiffany Voight, Wendy Ma, Tori Gamarri, as I mentioned, Stephanie Lorenas, and Lila Nissan is also on our team. She chose not to be here tonight because she had, wanted to have a baby instead. So we are dedicating, um, this, uh, presentation to Lila and George, little baby George. Um, so, um, our community engagement and, and purpose statement, I'll read this first and I'll just kind of talk a little bit about our approach to it this year. Um, is to engage in a community in which relationships are cultivated to foster a safe, supportive, respectful and inclusive environment where every student will thrive. Um, one thing that we talked about from day one of this year, obviously, you know, we were one of the last groups to present in, in winter of 2020. And, you know, then two years went by. So when we came back this fall, there were some of the same members and some new members. Um, but once, uh, some of the things we talked about were just that with community engagement, as much as any of the DLTs, you know, the show must go on, you know, because we have to keep working, engaging and reaching out to our community. But we also knew that we had to adapt. Um, and if that meant changing, uh, uh, one of our practices or one of our initiatives that we had started previously, um, perhaps sidelining one of those initiatives that we had, um, started previously or, or, you know, and really working to come up with new ones, um, we knew that that had to happen. And then finally, we also knew that, that the work we did this year, um, it is always our, one of our driving, um, motives, but really this year was, was to think about what the community needs were. So I hope you're going, you see that in, in the work that's presented tonight, um, by our members. I'm going to have our members introduce themselves as they start their initiatives. And then also just because I'm not really staring at you, obviously, um, for our, our team members, when you're ready to move on to the next slide, if I'm lagging behind, uh, just tell me next slide.
Thank you, Marty. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, board, for giving us the opportunity. My name is Samia Sharif. I'm the EL teacher in Middleton. I have been part of this awesome, um, DLT committee since I started work four years ago. And I'm super proud of the work that happens here. Um, this year, like Marty was saying, that we had to choose and think about what we would like to do first. Um, and that's why we came up with many initiatives within this community. We divided, this is how our community works. We end the way, and this is a very successful committee because we divide and conquer. So we divide ourselves into multiple subgroups and we work to the part, the, the subcommittee part of this subcommittee. Um, I was partnering with, uh, Tiffany, Dr. Voight and Martha. And we were working on initiative one, which was working to support families in need and crisis. Uh, what we, uh, saw when we came back in fall was that the kind of struggle that our families, especially EL families were having and facing to come back and, uh, adjust to in-person learning. Um, so we came up with this idea to support families in need and crisis. So the first slide that we have, Marty, would be the alignment. Um, and these are the three main governing alignment points, um, that resonated with us. That's why we put it up here. The first alignment of the initiative one is with the strategic plan alignment. That is making sure that the community saves, feel safe and it is a safe, supportive, respectful and inclusive environment. Next, it goes with our district priority of welcoming. And it also aligns with Delt. I'm also fortunate to work with Delt. And within that committee, uh, within that Delt organization, I would say. Um, I again, work with family and community as the agency substrate. So it's kind of like, I'm kind of like in between. I know what's happening in both, uh, subgroups. Um, so yeah, so this is what we do. So Tiffany, your turn maybe. Thank you.
Thank you, Samia. Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Tiffany Voight and I am the school psychologist at Middleton School. Um, we know that the global pandemic continues to impact our students, our families and our community in many, many different ways. When focusing our efforts, um, in the fall of thinking about how do we want to support our families, we knew it was essential to really think about our community resources. Um, we are so fortunate to be in a community that has so many resources. But we really wanted to challenge ourselves to look at how are all of our families accessing these resources in equitable ways and are we appropriately matching a family's needs? Furthermore, we know that when we're addressing our students' social emotional needs, they are going to be the most available for learning. Um, and they're going to be able to form those positive connections with their school and their community. Next slide, please. So when we were brainstorming in our subcommittee, um, we were thinking about some potential partnership ideas within our community and then within our district. Three community partnerships that we're hoping to explore, um, a little bit more is our EL Parent Center, Niles Township Government and our Community Clothing Closet. And internally, we're hoping to partner with our PTO, our District Student Support Team, which includes our school social workers and our school psychologists, and our new committee, our Bilingual Parent Advisory Committee. Ms. Orso will share a little bit more about our action items that we're looking to implement this year.
Hello, everyone, and thank you so much for letting me join you this evening. Um, my name is Martha Orso and I teach first grade. And, um, as you can tell, our goal is to support families and students. And with that in mind, we've identified some action items to work on. And you can see that the items in bold print are those that we're going to focus on this year. First, we want to, um, share information about available resources in our community with our staff members. And this might be highlighted in team or staff meetings or in building communications such as the Bulldog Barker. Um, we also wish to collaborate with the technology team to update the community backpack. And we realized the district currently has a page on the website called the Community Backpack. And it contains helpful information about community resources and handles, as links provided. And we'd like to collaborate with the tech team to make it more accessible for families. Next, we hope to increase family awareness of our community resources. And we plan to do this by encouraging staff members to periodically share information on their preferred communications platform like CSO, for example, about resources that are available in the community. And this could be tailored towards the needs that classroom teachers perceive that the families may have. And also let parents know about upcoming parent education opportunities that various, um, community organizations offer. We also want to find better ways to align with this, this existing organizations in our community. And we'll do this by reaching out to various organizations to learn more about them and to partner with them. Um, one idea we had was perhaps hosting a resource fair in the district where parents can come and find information about what is available in the community and speak directly to individuals from the organizations or invite members of these organizations to present helpful information, um, at district events. Um, we also want to continue to develop meaningful relationships with outside mental health and community organizations that equitably and appropriately address our families' given needs. And finally, we want to continue to share information with families about workshops that are offered by the EL Parent Center, our Niles Township Department of Special Education in a user-friendly manner. So as you can see, we have a lot of good work to do. You can go on to the next slide, Marty.
Um, and I will take over. I'm Kathy Lau. I'm the speech language pathologist at Middleton. Actually, Marty, you can go to the next slide. Um, so the next, another focus district initiative is welcoming. So the subcommittee I was part of was focusing on welcoming families into the classroom. Um, so Marty, can you go to the next slide? So this committee consisted of myself and Wendy Ma and, um, Lila Nissan. And we were kind of, you know, brainstorming and talking about how can we welcome families, more families into the classroom? And one thing Wendy mentioned was that her, the second grade, they do a morning greeting in different languages and their kids love it. And so it kind of sparked the idea of how fun would it be if we could have, rather than like a video, have actual parents come in and teach greetings in different languages. And it kind of expanded from there to think about how can we welcome families into, maybe do a greeting in another language or share about their culture or share about a family tradition. So that's kind of where the, um, idea started and the brainstorming started. And we came up with a couple, I guess, areas of focus for this initiative. So this is something that because of, you know, COVID, Zoom is so much more accessible and we're used to going remote. So it'd be a great way to take advantage of allowing families to join the classroom in person when it's safe. That would be wonderful, but also via Zoom if, or, you know, Google meets, if that's what works best for the family. Um, we were thinking that we would pilot it in second grade because we have Wendy. And the idea, it was really important to be flexible, um, with how families want to participate. So it is, come on in person, you can see the classroom, that would be amazing. But if remote works better too, that's another way to get families more involved in the class. Um, we also really wanted to keep it simple, um, just to minimize any planning or preparation, make it really accessible so that it doesn't feel intimidating or overwhelming and more families would feel welcomed into the classroom. Um, this would be something that would be built into morning meeting times, so kind of just built into something that's already in the schedule. Um, families would be welcome to include their child in that time in their sharing. Um, and the idea is to start by putting together a flyer and sending that home to families. And then, you know, once it's gotten started in second grade, it would be great to see it launch into the other grade levels as well. And I'm going to let Wendy take over and share some more specifics.
Um, so as I was kind of talking to other teachers about it and, um, trying to find out more information, I actually found out that first grade had already reached out to their families to do something similar because it is part of their curriculum. And, um, so I reached out to first grade and I had one teacher, um, multiple teachers were willing to send in. But this is an example of one parent that came in during the fall this year, um, to introduce the Korean Moon Harvest Festival. And, um, as you can see, the parent came in and read a book about it. And then they got to do like a lantern craft together. And then we got a little quote from this parent. And she said, "I enjoyed sharing our family's traditions of celebrating chusuk with my daughter's class. Sharing what's important and unique to us as a family helps the Middleton community embrace the importance of diversity and for students to be curious about life beyond the classroom and textbooks." Um, so I just thought that spoke volumes to why we wanted to really pilot something like this and really find ways of having families and, um, and parents come in and we didn't, and it doesn't even have to be a parent, you know, it could be someone that they know, it could be a neighbor, um, anybody really, um, that they would like to have come in. Obviously, um, with the rise in COVID numbers and different things like that, um, probably in person is not a great choice right now. Um, but like Kathy was saying, um, we would love to have, um, parents come in via Zoom. Um, we were even thinking like if they wanted to record a video beforehand and just send in a video. Um, because I do know in second grade, we have like morning greetings every time. And, um, right now we're just finding someone to share with us on YouTube or teach us on YouTube. But it would be great if we had like a bank of just like family language. But it would be great if we had like a bank of just like family languages, you know, and then we could just kind of, you know, show different families within the district, um, doing different morning greetings. So that's kind of our vision. Can you go to the next slide, Marty? So we do have, we have a drafted flyer. I kind of, we kind of used some of what first grade sent out and then we kind of tweaked it a little bit to be able to use it for, for right now would be for second grade. We wanted to send it out like January right now, but because of the COVID numbers, we thought it was a little too overwhelming for families and for classrooms right now, or for the classroom teachers. So we're hoping to send these out in February so that then parents would send these flyers back if they're interested in coming in. We really wanted to make it very low key so that it wasn't a lot of pressure for parents. But even if they just wanted to send a video of them or like if they wanted to read a book in their home language or different things like that, just so that our school and our classrooms are more introduced to different types of cultures and different traditions and different. Yeah. And to hopefully welcome more families. Okay, next slide. Another initiative that we kind of have an idea of starting hopefully soon is having parent liaisons. We know that we have a lot of families moving into the district and a lot of times they have a lot of questions or they have, they just aren't sure about different like traditions that Middleton or that the district has even. And they don't really know where to direct their questions. So we really wanted to kind of have some parent liaisons that were willing to support new families. So it would be current families within the district that new families could reach out to, that they would kind of like build a relationship together. Maybe it's somebody with the same home language or maybe it's someone that they found some kind of, you know, commonality with, like if it's a kid in the same grade or different area in the same classroom or something like that. We were hoping that that would help with the registration process, that would help with different questions about, you know, picture day or anything like that, that you just might not be sure about and you might just not know where to direct your question. We haven't quite started this initiative yet, but we are looking at different ways of maybe partnering with the EL Parent Center and having some of their, some of those parents that are already working, or we also have parent mentors in our buildings right now that maybe would volunteer themselves to become a parent liaison for some of these new families.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Lettinas. I'm the Assistant Principal over at Middleton. I had the privilege of working with Kim Skurik and Tori Gamery on our Home Visit Program Initiative. And so just to kind of give you more information, so in terms of alignment, basically what we're doing is taking the work that's been done in the past with this initiative and really expanding on it and structuring it in a way that will work moving forward. And so obviously it aligns to our strategic plan in that we're trying to broaden our two-way families throughout the community. It obviously is part of welcoming and I feel like welcoming is kind of two-pronged. So we want to make sure that we are welcoming, but we also want to make sure that everyone knows that we're welcoming. And so there's sort of those two things going on with this. And then this work obviously very closely aligns to the Delt strand of family and community as agency. And there are a couple of us on this committee that also are on family and community as agency. And so the overlap is very obvious and distinct. Helpful to, to make sure that we're reaching those Delt goals as well. For the next few slides, just sort of review the work that was done a couple of years ago, just to kind of give the board that update. So after a three-year study of 14 schools, home visits have shown that it increases student performance. It's a jumpstart to parent involvement, reduces discipline problems, and there's an increase in overall positive attitudes towards school. And so it really does give everyone that open communication and open door policy that we want everyone to feel and knows exists. So that's sort of our goal. In District Seventy-three and a Half, we are looking at the following core principles. So really, our visits are voluntary for everyone. We don't want to require anyone to participate or to do them. And that really builds the buy-in and trust that's needed to have a successful program. Two educators are trained and compensated, so just making sure that everyone is going with the same intention and the same purpose. Step three, we share hope streams and goals. And so we'll kind of share like what a year progression sort of looks like. And so all of these are incorporated into that. We don't target students, so the goal isn't to go for discipline or attendance or grades. There's no like specific target that the school would come in with. The goal really is that partnership piece. And so parents can, you know, let us know if they, they're interested in a visit. The school can kind of reach out, teachers can reach out. So we really do want it to be flexible and open. And then step five, educators go in pairs and reflect. And this really is part of that sort of professional development piece of it. So we want to build our program. And so by having staff go in partners or groups of three, that really allows us to then process, it allows us to plan together, reflect, revise in for future meetings if we need to. So it helps us build the program as we go. And so our home visit model, this is sort of an example of what it can look like. So our first visit really would be in the summer or the fall with this, and these are all with the same family. So the goal is to really focus on hopes and dreams, just like we set goals with students throughout the year. Really looking at what are your hopes and dreams for this year? How, how could this year play out? What questions do you have about the year? And then following up, so having that ongoing two-way communication throughout the year and being that support system for families in whatever way they might need. And then that second visit in the winter or spring, it could focus on academics or it could just follow up on the hopes and dreams, potentially setting goals for the next year as well. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kim Skurik.
Kim Skurik, and I am a fifth grade teacher at Middleton. So for their Home Visit Program, some of the work that had already been done pre-pandemic was in 2019, 20 school year. They came up with a mission statement and their mission statement was to build and strengthen relationships between the school and staff, the family and guardians, in order to support the well-being of all students. Recognizing the rich diversity of our district community, we want to foster open communication in a variety of comfortable settings. So they had a great goal with this mission statement. And then Marty, going on to the next slide, what they were able to do then in the pilot program was to have three families that were recommended by the teachers that were on the committee. They all were new to the district and there was one family per building. For the three families that they selected, they divided themselves, the staff divided themselves to make sure that somebody spoke the language of the family that they were going to visit. So one person in that, you know, in that group that went was able to speak the language of the family. And they contacted the families beforehand and discussed what was the expectations and that it would be a short visit. The parents and the family were able to choose the location, whether, you know, they felt comfortable inviting staff and teachers into the class, into, excuse me, into their homes. Or if they wanted to choose, as one family did, you know, maybe they wanted to meet at the Starbucks or the Panera and meet there instead. The teachers that visited brought little goodie bags of things. And it was nice because they were able to have conversations about plans for the school year and how we could get families better involved and their input on things for the year. And with that being said, I'm going to toss it to Dr. Voight, who in the next slide is in the beautiful picture because she got to participate with Eileen Kenny in one of the home visits that we did.
Yes. Thank you, Kim. I'm happy to share about my experience because I look back at these pictures and I can't help but smile. It really truly was so wonderful to engage in some of these home visits. As a school psychologist, home visits are a part of my role. But the vision that we were creating in our district is really focusing on building those connections. And that's exactly what we did. You can see in the pictures that the family that we visited were so kind and so gracious and made us all kinds of snacks as it was, we were coming after school. And they had just a window into their family and into their culture. And it really was wonderful. The children were so excited to see teachers there. And we saw all kinds of toys and learned about so much about our students. It was wonderful to partner with fellow colleagues and especially having Mrs. Shihad there was wonderful because she was able to help interpret for us. And one of the key outcomes from the story was that a student who was currently in kindergarten at this time was a little bit more reserved in the classroom setting. And after this visit, started to feel so comfortable talking to her teachers and really just started to soar with her social communication with adults and peers in the classroom. And that was just from one simple 20-minute visit. And it truly was remarkable to see those outcomes.
Thank you, Dr. Voight. And from all those visits, the, the, the three that they did in that year, just the overall positive outcomes in general, you know, building on what Dr. Voight said, just fostering that respect and understanding with families, increasing the trust and, you know, sharing of information. One of the things that was mentioned that came out of one of the home visits was though they're not designed to be, you know, discuss academic or school, like, you know, Dr. Voight said, there's a lot of toys and food. You know, in some, in one of the visits, you know, some school-related questions did come up. And, you know, one about Aaron's Law, like, what is that? And can you explain that to us? And I think the families felt comfortable in that setting, being able to ask those types of questions. And just overall, the, the, the visits in general just overall went very, very, very well. Marty, you can hit the next slide. So obviously during our 2021 year, we did not build on our home visits in person, but we still were able to look back and reflect on a lot that we did do during the pandemic year and think about going forward, how can we continue to build some of these things into our home visits? Just still that importance of building these relationships. I think we definitely learned last year that the school is that hub. It's the center. So many things we realized once the world shut down that the school became so responsible for. I definitely know I, my students love the library, being able to still have that library. And I know the book delivery to the homes was a huge, huge important way to foster this homeschool relationship, helping get the attendance up. So again, building that, you know, having that converse, those conversations and, you know, those signs on the lawn. That was just a huge, huge, huge overall. We got so much feedback about how great those things were. In moving forward, we'll pass it over to Tori to talk about what is in our plans for the future.
Thank you. So I am Tori Gamery and I'm the librarian at McCracken. And I'm a veteran in the district, but I'm new to this committee and I'm happy to have landed here because obviously, community engagement is important. It's near and dear to my heart. They gave me the easy slide since I knew. But here we are, we're sort of in the middle of our timeline on this initiative. Obviously, a lot of energy has gone into the research and some really successful. We're at the point now where we need to build that infrastructure so that we can move forward. And ultimately, we want to get to the point by about 2024 or 2025 that we're implementing on a larger scale. So hopefully at all three districts, or I mean, all three buildings in the district, you know, seeing how to implement with the middle schoolers, for instance. But I will say, just from dropping books off at doorsteps throughout last year, waving at families and, you know, talking to students about their dog, the next time I emailed with them, like little things. It is true that the connection is pretty easy to make, once you're out and about in the community with the students. So that's exciting. Marty, you can go to the next slide, which will sort of talk about what we're looking at this year in particular, building that infrastructure that's going to help us really be successful moving forward. So, you know, obviously finalizing the staff talking points and making sure that there is a feedback loop with all the stakeholders. So as we move forward and we have all of our systems and procedures, we're constantly getting that feedback about, you know, what was successful and where are areas for growth and that sort of thing. And then we'll need to do some research and some planning about professional development with the staff that is interested in doing these home visits. And then I hope conduct some home visits before the school year is out. Again, depending on how things are going COVID-wise, it might be virtual visits. But I think that can also be super impactful. And ultimately, we'll get back to doing things in person, right? Okay, you can go to the next slide, Marty.
Well, thank you. I'm going to talk about our fourth and final initiative, which is exploring grant funding opportunities to support the hiring and retention of a diverse staff. You know, you've heard, I think what you've been able to hear is the history of some of these initiatives. And if I'm going to be completely honest, the grant funding opportunities doesn't really have a history in the sense that we had kind of put it to the side in 2018, 19, and 2019, 20, thinking we had time. And of course, you know, two years goes by. And I think anyone who knows about grants too knows it's a little bit like taxes in the sense that if you don't know, if you don't understand it, you're kind of afraid to start. It's kind of hard to know where to start. So we've been really lucky, before I go any further in that respect, that to have Samantha Peterson join us because she knows grants. She's worked with them in the past. She has an eye for finding grants and also for kind of teaching. So I kind of, we kind of added this initiative a little bit later. And so we find ourselves kind of at the beginning stage a little bit, but it's a good beginning stage in the sense that we're going to show you some ideas that we have. And, and also, you know, just to show you where we are and how it aligns, of course, it aligns to a strategic plan because it's in there as far as pursuing grant funding for hiring a diverse staff, which also fits up within our district priorities and also fits within our Delt alignment. We're going to, we want to expand a little bit in our, our search for grants and to include, you know, chances to address equity and also steam. Our first grant that we're discussing is, is finding and applying for or utilizing internal grant funds for a field trip to Northeastern Illinois University for our pathway program, students interested in pursuing a career in teaching to tour the educational buildings and meet with the school of education officials. This is like so many other things. This is a kind of a plan that we've started. We talked to Kate Wyckoff of Northeastern Illinois. It's a little bit on hold as we see how this pathway program can look this year. But I think that this is, this is one of those plans that, that we can get up and going in a, in a relative hurry in the sense that once we get our students back into mentoring and tutoring other students, we can set up this plan with Northeastern. They're very eager and excited to, to have us over. Another idea that we are pursuing is to apply for a grant to fund our teachers, admin, and district staff in participating in the Equity Leadership Institute. And this institute is actually, and this initiative is actually designed specifically to train district staff and learning how to increase diversity in Skokie, the school district seventy-three and a half school. So this, this speaks to our, our, speaks to our Delt initiative. It speaks to our strategic plan. And the, the money that we would use would be used to pay for subs. It would also be possibly retreats, you know, for this staff development and this professional development around, around hiring this diverse staff. We're going to continue to apply for family engagement grants, similar to the Ready 4K Family Engagement by the year's end and to provide families of Skokie, School District Seventy-three and a Half with year-round learning support. These are kind of, you know, I would say versatile grants in the sense that we can use the money for either curriculum, for professional development, and also for materials. So it's, these grants allow us a little bit of freedom to address our areas of needs as far as providing year-round learning support for our students. We're also going to be continuing to apply for, first, it's a robotics community that prepares young people for the future. Sorry about that. Let me move this a little bit so I can read it. I apologize. Twelve grants that allow addressing equities, the science and technology. The grants support students from underserved, underrepresented communities and help them develop new and innovative approaches to take on that, the jet, the education gap. Looking ahead, we're talking about NASA's Robotics Alliance Project. Looking ahead, we're talking about NASA's Robotics Alliance Project. They have a grant that we're going to be, will be applying for that grant in 22, 23. So also addressing our STEM needs, we'll be working with Anthony and Lisa Rep for that. I'm sorry about that. I apologize. Where did I go here? And then finally, I apologize. We want to, I have spoken this about Samantha, we just want to make sure that we're also communicating with our teachers about different grant opportunities that they should be applying for, letting them know these grants are out there. And this is definitely where this is a learning process and working with Samantha. And this can be a teaching process and working with our, our district staff to be able to identify these grants and then lending them the technical support for creating and crafting these grant applications. And I'll just start us off with the alignment before I turn it over to Kathy to talk about some of our ongoing initiatives, the one that she is working on. You know, we have some, some plans that we've had to shelf for the pandemic. And we've had a few that we've been able to, to continue to, you know, to take on. And so we're going to be talking about those specifically around the Ida Crown Collaboration. And then our work with Oakton Community College Futures Unlimited Program.
Yeah. So in 2019, as part of this committee work, we restarted the Ida Crown Initiative, which was working with Ida Crown, it's walking distance from Middleton. It's this beautiful private high school. And so we started up again, I was working with, Ashley, will you go back, Marty?
You got.
Thank you. So I have been working with Dr. Phil Zabarez. He is the Director of Social Student Services at Ida Crown to coordinate having volunteers from the high school come over and, you know, work with our classrooms. And so we started it up again in 2019. These are some of our volunteers from then. If you see Sarah, she's on the right. She was a sophomore when we started or restarted this program. And it was off to a great start. The kids really enjoyed having the volunteers come over. The volunteers loved coming over to Middleton and working with our, our students. And then COVID hit, so that had to go on pause. And, you know, last year it was pretty much on pause. I had communications, we had some meetings with Ida Crown. But I think, you know, what's really cool is even though it was on pause last year, that connection has been kind of rekindled, I guess, and it's been great. Like to be able to go over to Ida Crown and visit and meet a lot of the staff over there. To get to work with students from Ida Crown has been great. Actually, Sarah is now a senior. And she asked me for a college recommendation, which I never thought I would ever do. Working in elementary school, you never think you're going to give a college recommendation. But she, it was just cool. She's going to be going to Wash U, which is in my hometown. So it was just a really neat connection. So what's exciting is that last week, Dr. Phil, that's what the students call him over at Ida Crown, Dr. Phil and Sarah and I met via Zoom to start up some planning. And obviously, everything is still remote right now. We're not doing things in person, but we are starting up planning for having Ida Crown volunteers come back to Middleton. Hopefully, oh, thanks, Marty. Hopefully in the spring would be ideal, knowing that we have to be flexible. The plan is to lay down the groundwork, kind of set up, set up the, I guess, framework to have volunteers come in this spring. We can be ready to go if it's conducive for that. But in the meantime, Sarah, our student volunteer, has actually gathered 10 to 15 students at Ida Crown who are really interested in helping out at Middleton. And my response was, we would love to have you help, but everyone's a little overwhelmed and we don't want to give teachers more than they can handle by now. So, you know, coordinating volunteers, as much as our teachers love having volunteers, it's even via Zoom now is not the best time. And Sarah and, you know, the volunteers had a great idea of, they just want to put together their own videos, just reading aloud a book or maybe doing a Go Noodle type of brain break. They'll share it with me. Dr. Phil and I will kind of review them, make sure they're appropriate. And then just share them with teachers and teachers can do a read aloud, you know, have a volunteer read aloud or use Ida Crown Go Noodle type break. And it'd just be a great way to have some connection there without putting any additional things on teachers' plates right now. So that's the plan. It's up to Sarah to get those videos together and over to me. And I will distribute from there as, as is appropriate. But it's exciting to get this started again. And I think it's a really creative and appropriate way to, you know, get this volunteer thing going without making it more for staff and also being safe. So that is the plan for now and hopefully in spring we'll be welcoming some volunteers as well.
I think that what Kathy speaks of really too, kind of goes back to actually 2019 to 2020, in which we really worked to establish these relationships with outside organizations. And, and then combines, you know, our current need to adapt. So it's a good kind of meeting of those two, two different themes from two different years. Another relationship we've been able to keep going is our work with Oakton Community College, their Futures Unlimited Program. And we were actually able to hold that this, this fall, just before Thanksgiving. Forty-eight students in STEM and science teachers from McCracken and Middleton took part in the workshop at McCracken. Futures Unlimited is an educational program that provides eighth graders and gender expansive students with exciting opportunities to explore diverse careers in STEM. Students participated in workshop sessions around robotics, the physiological impact of extended screen time and coding. And the day culminated with a keynote address by Eugenia Chang, who is the scientist at the Art Institute of Chicago. Just a side note, that this is the third year that, in a row, that Oakton Community College has completely had to change this program due to different, different factors. So, so they're adapting and we're adapting. We would love to get back out to Oakton to be able to tour the facilities. We know that that's more engaging for our students. But in the meantime, of course, we want to, you know, make sure that we're still keeping this relationship alive and also getting, you know, our students, giving them these opportunities because they're so important to them. So, thank you, everyone. I'm going to see if there's any questions. I'll stop sharing in fact, so that we can kind of see everybody's faces again.
Thank you so much. That was fascinating and really exciting. It was really exciting to see so many concrete suggestions and timelines and yeah, right up my alley. So I just wanted to, I have a bunch of questions, but I'll put it out to the board first to see if anyone on the board has any questions for the Community Engagement Committee.
Thanks, Emily, for opening the floor. And thank you so much, Community Engagement Committee. This was awesome. I loved hearing from all the familiar faces, meeting the new faces and loved that everyone had an equal part. Cleeter was very passionate. I think that's like the buzzword here about their respective part. And I have some questions and by no means are these questions like meant to serve as a challenge by any means. Just, I hope they maybe spark an idea or two. So that's what my intention is, I want to level set with that. And I also, similar to Emily, have like a lot, but I'll stick to, let's say, three for now. So I will jump right in. So I'll go in order of the presentation to starting off with the supporting families in need slash crises. Something that I thought would be really helpful would be like a standard definition and or concrete examples of what it means to be in need or crisis. And I bring this up because I know we define like basic need or social emotional need. But what does that mean? And I ask this because, to be blunt, I think a lot of the families that perhaps may fall into these categories come from cultures of almost shame attached to asking for things. And to be clear about what those resources are, we'll really go farther away about utilizing those resources. So that was just a call up. But if anyone does have like an answer on the top of their head, like, oh, well, we did define it as this, maybe I missed it. Feel free to let me know now, or it can just be like a duly noted, we'll do that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I don't think we have defined needs for families. And when we were thinking about some action steps, I think that goes hand in hand with defining how these community resources can help our families. So thank you for that suggestion. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And that actually ties into what I was going to say, follow up to that too. I love these action items, but just for clarification, are we, is the goal to amplify existing resources or to create additional resources? And again, I think the definition of crisis slash families in need would help decide that.
I think it's both. In speaking as our subcommittee, we know that we have a plethora of resources on our website. One of our goals is to make that more accessible. And as staff, making sure that we first know what all those resources are and where they're located. And then being able to expand that to our families. And so that's one of our hopes is that it's not just the school social worker or the school psychologist that are sharing these resources that we all are engaging within our community. So we definitely want to look at what we have and see what we need to change. And if there's things that need to be added, we'll certainly do that. But we want to first start with our existing resources.
Fantastic. Love that. Good stuff. Pivoting to home visits. So I actually like halfway through the presentation was kind of unclear on what a home visit was. Maybe it's just something that like didn't happen when I was a student. So I was very unfamiliar with the concept. Concept, I think what was really helpful was the outcome of a historical home visit that really helped clarify what that meant to me. But can we, and again, if this is something that's a premature question, just let me know. And I'm probably jumping ahead, but can we clarify like who's doing the visiting? Like is, will it be a standard set group of people? Will that be overwhelming to have them be? And then how can we ensure the home visit process is equitable? Like, is it volunteering? Because if so, we know that a certain group of people, we love them, but they're prone to volunteering over others. And are they the ones who will benefit from the home visit? So clarification on that process. And if that's premature, then I'll wait for the timeline.
No, I, I mean, I think those are exactly the questions that we want to be posing as we're starting to create this infrastructure. And so I think those two questions in terms of equity and how we want this process to go as a district is exactly what we want to be asking. So I mean, we don't have it crafted out yet, or we don't know what that'll look like. And we definitely have the core groups to begin to have those conversations and the feedback loops to all of those groups. So family, community as agency, looking at the building leadership teams, making sure it goes out to our Equity Advisory Committee, our parent group, making sure it gets out to B-PAC. So we have like all these different feedback loops that I think, you know, can be involved in some of those answers as we begin to craft the infrastructure. So thank you for those questions.
Amazing. This is so good. What a good Q and A session. Okay, I'm sorry. I know I said three, but I'll do two quick ones because these are short. And then I'll pass it on to someone else. Thank you all so much for answering my questions. And again, fantastic presentation. This is just a reflection of excitement, if anything. In terms of grants, I was super pleased to see both proactive and reactive ideas included in the grant process. So for example, you know, everything from professional development for existing teachers to also an investment in finding those additional teaching and stuff. As a committee, have we thought about perhaps like incentivizing teachers to find grants? I know like the grant itself is the incentive, but is there another process that we can put in place to ensure that like perhaps one teacher might be prone to finding a grant and applying? So their classroom might be impacted in a greater way than another? Like, is there a system that we thought about putting in place to just make sure that that application process can be seamless as well?
We really haven't. I can tell you that Bush, you know, whenever I go into Samantha's office, it's, I mean, it's kind of like my class, you know, my grant class. And that she's, and she's given me ideas to work with about like, you know, think about what the, the program that you want to build. Let's look and maybe, maybe the next time I would go and she would say, let's just see what's out there. But I think to your point, I think that there are teachers and staff who are actually probably good at finding grants. But it's kind of siloed, you know, they kind of do their own thing. And, and that makes sense because they're a teacher, a staff member who is looking to find a grant for a specific program or class or a project that they're going, that they're working. But I, so I think that when Samantha said, let's create communication for them to draw attention to these different grants that are out there. But I think another thing we can do is to, to talk about that incentivizing idea, but also to spotlight teachers who found grants to say, this is what this teacher did. This is the grant they found and this is what they did with it. Because I think that's the light for a lot of teachers that goes off of like, oh, I have a project that's similar to that. You know, where do you find this? And I think that's it. Sometimes the modeling is such an important thing to see for teachers of like, that's a teacher in my building, that's a teacher two doors down, and they're finding these grants. So I think informing teachers, but also spot, putting the spotlight on teachers who are, who are actually good at this to show them off a little bit as like, you know, models that they can do, you can do this too.
That's a fantastic idea. Yeah, incentive can mean anything and yeah, amazing. That's good. Really good. Last one, love the idea of the, and I love the idea of the ongoing Ida Crown Collaboration. Fantastic. Is there a way, and you all have heard me say this at multiple board meetings, that we can push this at Niles North and tap into our alumni and do something similar?
So and two years ago, I know that we had, we did, Marty will probably speak to this, but we did have a lot of connections with Niles North. And one way that we did it was through our garden, our gardening club. We actually had a lot of, not a lot, but we had some Niles North. You know, students come and volunteer to help with the garden and it counted for their volunteer hours too. So that's one initiative that we had going. It's not currently active, but that's something that could be restarted when it's, you know, appropriate.
And we also had some students come over and teach a lesson in financial literacy a couple of years ago. And, you know, so that's something when we can feel more comfortable inviting folks back in. But, but, and I know that, you know, prior to him leaving, Tom O'Brien had some connections with alumni too. So, so those are all great ideas that we can revisit to, to, you know, to rekindle those.
And Marty, can I jump into, you had the sports clinics?
We did, we had the sports clinics and yeah, those, you know, and I've talked to Brett Bildstein, who's the athletic director at Niles North. And, you know, like everything else, they're a little bit on, on hold. And we had the football team come over, we had the volleyball team come over to hold clinics, big successes, great turnout, excitement. And, you know, I think they're probably ready to do that again when it's safe, you know. So, so we can definitely look for hopefully spring and then Tori's mentioning it. She said Niles North Students for Social Justice. So we've, again, to Busher, it's a little bit like we've done it individually. I think maybe set something up where we actually branded a little bit and we, we give it a name. So it's, we're just constantly feeding that and documenting it.
Love to hear all this. I'm going on mute now. Thank you all so, so much again. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else on the board have a question?
I have, I have a question, but I want to start off by saying thank you for such a wonderful presentation and all the hard work that you guys have put into it. I know COVID has complicated a lot of the things that you guys want to do because it's so much about, you know, getting up and close and personal with people. And it's kind of hard when you got to stay six feet away and in a mask or. So I appreciate the presentation. One of the questions I have may be completely off of our radar, but I just know that we're beginning to see in our, in Chicagoland area uptick of families who are seeking asylum from Afghanistan. And I'm just wondering if we're seeing any of that in our area or our school, or if we have a plan on how to engage those students who may be entering our district? Or if that's even on our radar?
I know that we had talked about it at one of our meetings and I, though we didn't form a plan, I know, you know, it's, it's an awareness of it. So I think that that is something we could definitely talk about, creating a plan to welcome, that's for sure. I mean, I think, I know that we talked about it in one of the early meetings of the school year.
And then my second question, I don't know if this is a question or a statement, but it kind of piggybacks off of something that Busher brought up about the idea of maybe teachers who have an idea of how to find grants or write grants. And I was kind of thinking of something like, kind of like the train to trainer model, for example, like, and I just don't know if as a district, we have any kind of like professional development pipeline where teachers can maybe be, can maybe run their own professional development. And they can like send it out to other teachers who want to come. But so the teacher who hosts it is like, you know, paid some kind of, I'm sure it works out with Mac Mia. But it's almost like, you know, you take the knowledge in-house and you spread it with others in-house. But everybody's learning together. And so that way it's, yes, we're elevating those voices and amplifying those people who can do those things. But we're also, you know, compensating them for their time. But they're also probably more comfortable with their peers who are comfortable in turn, learning from them.
We have our mini conferences. I can see that definitely being a good mini conference topic. You know, a lot of times it's, it's, they center around how to better use Google, how to use your smartphone, really practical and pragmatic, you know, skills. But this is maybe one that would be interesting because I, there's probably like myself, people who are like, oh, I've always wanted to know more about that. I guess I could find it online. I guess I could find it online or I could go see someone actually who I work with kind of guide me through the process, just at least getting started and at least finding more out about it. And and maybe again, they could team with collaborate with Samantha in that regard to kind of work together and show it off.
Um, the last thing is I sent you all a video. Um, I went to the triple I conference and um the very beginning of your presentation, you touched on tapping into families and tapping into the different languages in our district. Um, and one of the presentations I attended, um, school district, Kildare School District, um, ninety-six has like five or six minute welcome video um that's on their district website. But they tap into every single one of the languages in their um district. But the thing that I thought was most touching about it, every aspect of their district was represented, not just the students. So like, you know, the custodial staff, the, you know, the principals, the students, parents, and it just showcased the diversity of that district. And then like, it was just really sweet. So I just passed that resource on and not no expectations, but I just thought it would be, it touched me. So I thought it might be nifty for you guys to see. So thank you for all your hard work and all you do.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the board want to ask questions?
Okay, I'll go. Um, yeah, echoing what Kelly and Busher both said, it really a very exciting um presentation. And my my questions are only um as a result of my excitement about about the the presentation. And um definitely, I I really like the the um interest in like read. I don't know if the community backpack was ever like a highly used resource, but it it definitely is a space that I I want to find a way, you know, for the district to find to make that a a place that folks go. And I think that was especially relevant. Um, you know, over this winter break where we sent out a communication asking folks, you know, to to get your kids tested, um, you know, at a at a COVID testing site before coming back. Um, and of course, that was optional, but I think a lot, you know, some of the feedback I heard was, you know, some parents just really didn't know where to go or who to ask for more information. And so, you know, being able to have um more kind of like video resources and and maybe even like, I like the idea of the parent liaison. So maybe we have like various parent liaisons, like please go to our website and you can, you know, email this person. You know, if we have certain parents that have volunteered that folks feel like they feel comfortable to reaching out or eventually developing some kind of phone tree so that we can reach out to some of our community uh communities, especially new immigrant communities who who may not just know how to navigate all of that. And in when we were at the vaccination clinic, um, you know, we had one family that came in and they didn't have kids in the district, but they, you know, one of the adults was getting her first shot. And, you know, it was like spent a lot of time like identifying where she could get her second shot and really, you know, uh, making sure that it was clear that like you do not have to pay for these shots, you should not get charged for them because some of these COVID centers are, you know, charging seventy-five dollars for a rapid test, which they should not be doing, right? And the COVID site that I normally go to and have had quite a bit of success, we got our tests and we never even got our results, right? And so navigating all of this is tricky for everybody, but finding ways to to offer more resources, I think, would be great. Um, you mentioned uh at some point in the in the slideshow about tapping into the PTO. So I guess just wondering, and this isn't a question for right now to answer, but just wondering what are some of the thoughts on um like what the P, how the PTO could be beneficial and what in what way the PTO could be beneficial and um and helpful? And also just thinking about how the board can be useful. I thought it was really fun for, you know, uh, you know, the staff and the teachers are super tapped out, the PTO is kind of tapped out. So the it was really great to have the the board step up and volunteer um at these vaccination clinics. And I think that there are definitely some of us, I think the board in general would be happy to have other opportunities to volunteer in the community in any way. So um thinking about in terms of community engagement, how the board could be useful to you. Um, uh, we'd be happy to, you know, to to help out. Um, and then I think the, you know, just finding ways um to work with our tech team. And, you know, I frankly feel like our, we probably need a whole new rebuild for our our website in terms of making it really a go-to place um uh and a resource. But um in the interim, figuring out, you know, with the tech team, what are some of the different ways we can um highlight resources? And I love all these um, the video ideas and, you know, being able to put that up onto our website, right? And if we do have students from um the high school across the street doing, you know, reading books, like how, you know, tweeting that out and putting that up on our website. So all the students in our district can benefit from that and um and have a story, you know, a story time at bedtime or have stories read in different languages that other kids can listen to, I think would be a real asset um to our district. So just excited, um, excited to see the timeline, really excited about the home visit program. I was on the community engagement table at the last strategic planning session. Um, when we came up with our last strategic five-year plan and, you know, we talked about that a lot. And so just excited to see it back um up and, you know, part of a of a multi-year timeline. So just thanks for all your hard work and enthusiasm. Um, and really also just trying to find ways to make it work despite the persistent pandemic, right? Like not just putting it all off until the pandemic's over, like there are ways we can continue to do this work despite um the pandemic. So thank you very much.
All right. Are there any other um board members who'd like to speak?
Um, all right. So we're going to move on then. Um, so our next um strategic planning presentation for next month will be the learning environment. So we look forward to hearing about that. Um, item four D is the superintendent's update. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hightower and also just remind everybody who's on the call that I put the link for board docs in the chat. So all, you know, all these documents that are being shared um are available on board docs to the community.
Good evening, everyone. I hope that you um have had a wonderful evening. I do realize that the adaptive pause was not the most welcomed opportunity, but it was something that we needed to do. Um, I wanted to start by saying that for the adaptive pause, the concerns that we had. We were left on Monday without any day porters. Day porters are the people that would clean the building throughout the day. They would manage in the bathrooms, wiping things down. Yes, we recognize that COVID is not um identified as just wiping areas down, but maintaining the cleanliness and the sanity sanitation of the building is extremely important. And then we got word that we would not have the cleaning staff for that evening. So because of that, we realized that we would not have the cleanliness that is necessary. We would not be able to fog the rooms that needed it because of um COVID positive cases. And so those things we had to mitigate immediately. Our students and our staff, our teachers must be in clean conditions and must recognize that we respect their health and their ability to actually do the service that they do with teaching and learning within our buildings every day. So we did take a pause. Um, but our students were on the computer with their, what had their check-ins with their teachers. They will start their learning in a day or two, depending on how long it takes just to get all of the materials taken care of and sorted so that students are ready for academics at the highest level. I do thank all of our teachers for their quick actions. And I thank the district admin team because we learned this information about eight o'clock in the morning, eight to nine o'clock in the morning. We learned we wouldn't have the staff in the afternoon. And we were able to then jump right into meetings, making sure that we had the right plans of action and that we could communicate with our families in a timely manner and ensure that we had a protocol and a plan for exiting as well as for starting up this morning. And so thank you to everyone for going into immediate action. At one, one thing I must say is I thank my staff as far as the district admin team because they are truly a team. It was amazing to see how quickly everyone jailed together, understood what the expectations were, and then just that started to deploy the resources that it needed to take in order to get that up and running, which also supported us being able to figure out what will we do about our shield testing, which is so important, and making sure that we are going to have shield testing for both McCracken and Meyer, even though we are not technically inside the school spaces. So for any parents that are listening, I do hope that you um find time or someone in the family finds time to allow the students to test so that we can continue to manage our positive and our non-positive cases um so that we understand exactly what we're up against and that we understand what we need to do when it comes to our cleaning services and what rooms and what spaces and where we have our um concerns as far as cleanliness. I do also want to thank McMia for taking a survey and giving us information about how our teachers are feeling so that we can ensure that we are being responsive to our teachers as well in this because we are all human and we all question um COVID. And, you know, what are we doing collectively to make sure that our community is safe? And so we have taken this pause. We do anticipate by every means being back in our buildings right after the holiday. So on Tuesday, that day is still very much the day that we plan to return to our school. Um, I'm not going to take the details of what we've done thus far from Samantha because she has worked very diligently and extremely hard to identify some companies that will come in and continue to to clean our buildings. We will no longer rely on one company um because that put us in a very interesting bind that no school should be forced to be in with not having a cleaning service. We also had some high cases of COVID um our first week back from the holiday. We anticipated high cases, but this was the first time we've had them this high. I did stay in contact with Skokie Health Department throughout this entire ordeal um with seeing the numbers every time they came out and questioning, okay, is this an outbreak? But understanding that this was a carryover from the holiday and understanding that we were doing all of the mitigating factors that we possibly could. And so we did not close the schools for those purposes because we never hit ten percent um for any school specifically. So there was no need to close. Also, we did not get into a situation where we didn't have enough staff to open the building safely for our students to be inside school um and get an instructional education from our teaching staff and our support staff. And so that was actually a um a huge win that our staff was safe and our staff was healthy. And that's the thing that I continue to really smile about was that we did not have, you you know, the hardships that many places have had. And so making sure that our staff is safe and healthy, making sure that our students are safe and healthy are the top priority for our district because if they're not, then nothing else matters and we won't get the educational um investments that we expect and desire. As far as um the adaptive pause, this was extremely necessary because we could not open up a school and ask people to come in knowing that the cleanliness of the building was compromised because we did not have a cleaning service that reported to the building on Monday at all. And so now we are having them to come in, we're getting, and again, I let me not talk about that because Samantha can talk to about it to much detail. Um, but I thank my families. I thank you very much for your ability to um understand, to pivot and to send some questions that, you know, for us to consider and making sure that we stay in close partnership throughout our um educational time with each other. I wanted to give a special thanks to um Mr. Chris, who is our custodian, um, who handles mainly McCracken. And I thanking him because he has been a constant um support in the midst of not having a buildings and grounds director. And he has been a constant support over the break of winter because he made sure that he was coming in early to check on everything that could potentially go wrong in a building when you have such low temperatures, as well as he was checking on the custodian staff that was in the building to ensure that they were doing what needed to be done over break. Um, he has also just taken on such a leadership role in making sure that we had our, all of our spaces salted and all the snow was up so that our teachers and our staff were able to get into the building safely. Um, and he's been going in for every one of our vaccine clinics very early in the morning to make sure that our buildings are set up for the vaccine to be given, as well as the one that is closing down the spaces after the vaccine clinics have ended and locking up our buildings to ensure that they are safe and orderly and ready for the next day. So I can't thank him enough for all of his support. And I do want to just uh recognize that our musical genius Chip um taught classes at the Midwest Clinic this year, um, which was the seventy-fifth anniversary. And we were well represented as he taught the first class of trombone uh to a large audience and broke down specifically for someone like me who's never taken a music class, some real understanding about what happens genetically or inside of your body and inside of your mouth as you are learning how to control a trombone, which was pretty interesting. And a special thanks to all of our board members for joining myself and Samantha at the different vaccine clinics. Um, the last total, I believe, we had four hundred sixty-seven people receive vaccinations out of the four clinics that we ran. And so thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Dr. Hightower. Um, does anyone on the board have any questions for Dr. Hightower? Okay, moving on. Um, item four E, suspension report. There were no suspensions. Um, so we'll move on to the administrator's update, item four F. Um, if you want to start with Dr. Way, you want to give, start off?
Sure. Great. Thank you. Um, so uh December was kind of a short month, so this is a short report. Um, but following Thanksgiving break, uh Meyer School started their Coins for Kindness campaign and reraced one thousand fifty-five dollars and, excuse me, forty, uh twenty-three cents um just by students and families how bringing in coins uh to donate to the cause. So with those proceeds, we were able to um purchase gifts for district families who needed a little support over the holidays. Uh, and uh I'm very thankful for the Meyer Parent Leader volunteers who helped us shop for those gifts uh so that we could put on the Meyer Mart for our students was, which is also part of our curriculum um in terms of uh needs and uh wishes. And so uh we were able to have a Meyer Mart in December. Um, again, the Meyer Parent Leaders helped us uh volunteer to run the store. Uh, we also completed our winter benchmark assessments before break. Um, so we were able to do that and we'll take a look at the data uh later this month uh as a staff and in our grade level teams. Uh, we also uh issued our second issue of our video newsletter for families. Uh, you know, one of our school goals is to communicate with families in a more accessible way. Um, and so that was uh one of the things that we decided to do this year. And so um right before break, I did issue the second video newsletter. So and of course, that idea was born uh here at the board meeting at the beginning of the year. So thank you for that uh great idea. Uh, and this isn't part of my written report, but I do want to say a big thank you to our teachers and staff uh who, you know, we've done a lot of pivoting the past two years. Uh, and we had another pivot uh yesterday. had another pivot yesterday and they've done so great, put in so much time and hard work. I really appreciate everything they've done. You know, our teachers, our related service providers, our specials teachers, our paraprofessionals, our office staff. And I really want to give a special thank you to Katie Orleans, our school nurse, who has been incredible during this time and has, you know, shouldered so much of the load when, after returning from break and really just all year. So thank you very much to everybody.
Thank you so much, Dr. Way. And we'll move. Did I mute? Nikki, you can go.
Okay. All right, let me pull up my screen here. So we're really excited. I talked about this last month, but we're really excited about our social justice club. We did meet again last week before we went on our adaptive pause. We have our permission slips that are ready to go. They were supposed to go out this week, but probably we'll have to, to use Helen's words, pivot on that and get those out next week. But we're excited to get our groups up and going to get those permission slips out. You can look in the weekly on Friday. I'll have an update in the weekly for parents about what the club entails and what it looks like, when we'll meet and how to sign up for that. And our first lesson is going to be about say something, which really is about, you know, what's something that's happening in our community, in your school, in the world that you want to say something about? And when you do want to say something, what's the appropriate way that you can go about saying it so that you're actually heard and received in your message and can actually make change in this world? So we're excited about that. We're also going to do a survey for the students about what do they want to say something about so that we can work together as a group and as a team to implement that in our building? I'm really excited and I want to give a huge shout out to Dan Schwartz, Sam Peterson, and Dr. Hightower for approving a purchase of over 750 new guided reading sets for our teachers. It's going to really beef up our guided reading leveled library and it's going to be a significant update for us. And I know that, you know, we had to find those funds in a very difficult time. And I just really appreciate the efforts on, you know, Dan's part, on Sam's part and on Dr. Hightower's part for doing that. It's going to be primarily sixty for sixty-five percent nonfiction, which is really, really important for building that tier two vocabulary for our kiddos. And it's going to also focus on our science and social studies and math. So we're excited about that. And then our, much like Dr. Way said, our board reports are due on the Thursday before. So last Thursday, we had no idea that we were going to go on an adaptive pause. And I too have to give a shout out to our teachers, to our students and to our families for pulling together. The teachers yesterday had, I don't know, maybe an hour's notice and I didn't hear one complaint. I went around to every classroom and asked, checked in with people and asked how they were doing and what do they need? And they said, don't worry about it, I'm fine, I've got it. They asked me how I was. I just can't be more proud of our teachers for pulling together, for thinking about what's best for our kids, for the communication that they provide to our families and for how strong our culture is despite the, the difficult year that it's been, quite honestly, and continues to be, especially with me being new and other new administrators. So I thank them from the bottom of my heart. I miss them already. It's only been a day and I can't wait to get back to the building and see our kiddos and, and see our teachers. And also I just have to say thank you so much to the parents. Last week I made over with Stephanie Larenas, the amazing AP, Assistant Principal at the Building and our two admins, we made over a hundred phone calls to either quarantine or isolate students. And I would say ninety-nine point nine percent of those conversations were all incredibly well-received, positive, appreciative. And today I have received multiple emails from parents thanking us and the teachers for everything that we're doing. And it could be very different. You know, I, I came from a situation where it was very different and I just can't thank the community enough for your support because this is so hard for all of us. It's hard for you as parents, it's hard for us as administrators, it's hard for our teachers. It's just, it's just very hard for everyone, but the fact that we're all working together for the most part is a really special thing and I feel very, very thankful for that. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And last but not least, Nancy Ariola.
Hello. So I will too just highlight a few things from the principal advisory, which, and I will touch on our act, our adaptive pause too. But before we went on winter break, we did have our winter concert, so orchestra, symphonic band, and seventh and eighth grade singers and concert choir performed at Niles North High School. And although we put some, there were adjustments made, you know, limited family members and also, you know, the, the performances were in and out on a rotating basis. It was a wonderful performance. It was great to have, you know, parents be able to enjoy that as well as students. So we want to thank student performers, want to thank family members and of course Amy Keibert, Chip DeStefano, and Jennifer Cage, all for just pulling that together in a wonderful way. I also wanted to highlight some eighth grade upcoming important events, which are also in my newsletter, so I won't go into great depth, but our eighth graders have Curriculum and Activities Night coming up in January. And this year, the high school has separated it into two different nights, so January eighteenth and January nineteenth versus a virtual parent presentation on the eighteenth via Zoom. And then on the nineteenth, and I can't say for sure because I know everything is fluid, but they are planning for an in-person Curriculum and Activities Fair. They will be in contact and have been in contact with our eighth grade families, but we do like to share any information that we get. Student registration appointments for freshman year are also happening on Thursday, February third, and those are going to be done differently as well. So those are virtual counselor appointments this year. Students will actually participate at McCracken with guidance from us, so they will log into those meetings virtually, which is definitely different. Parents would log in at home or at work. Students would log in at school and then we would join their counselor for those ten-minute counselor appointments for class placement for next year. So we, you know, want to help to support all of those important milestones. You know, our eighth graders are very important. They've had a very interesting last two and a half years and we want to give them the best experience that we can possibly give them as they transition to high school. Our, just a few other, so you know, we had planned to do Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service this Monday. We will not do the in-person program. You know, Laura Williams and Tori Gamarri usually host that event, but what we will do is we will still host, our social justice club will be organizing, communicating and collecting items, food items that will be donated to the Niles Pan, the food pantry, which we did last year. It's completely outdoors. So we will still be able to facilitate that on Monday, January seventeenth, which is great. You know, and when we, we did plan, you know, for students to come back to school after winter break, we knew that would, it would be an interesting and challenging time after break. We did have set up our students for success. All of our advisors reviewed safety protocols with students, so wearing masks, maintaining social distance, consistent washing and sanitizing of hands. And, you know, we appreciate our advisors going through that. We also appreciate our students really trying hard to follow those protocols, which isn't very easy. You know, talking to teachers that week, they were very impressed with their, with their efforts that they made to social distance and to wear their masks. And, you know, it's no fault of their own, you know, why we had the increase in cases and we continue to be impressed about, you know, from their ability to really be mature. But again, we're dealing with, you know, middle school students and they still struggle. They love to be with their peers, we know that. And we appreciate families as well, just trying to help to reinforce those expectations at home. But they have done a great job. And although that we had planned to open locker rooms following break, we know that that's a smaller space and we'd like to give a little bit more time for, you know, these cases to go down, which we're hopeful that they will. Something I just want to touch on again, just, you know, as Dr. Way and as Nikki talked about too, just the fact that we did have to make a very significant pivot in the last 24 hours and our teachers and our students and our families have really met that head on and we appreciate all the work that's gone into making that possible, everyone's flexibility. Students, you know, getting, they got right back on, our advisors met with students today, you know, and we got that information out to parents, out to students in, you know, no time at all. And we really just appreciate the effort and flexibility. We know our teachers are working really hard and we will have three full days of remote learning with students, you know, going from class to class. So we're excited about that, but we're also excited to welcome students back into the building on Tuesday.
Thank you so much, all three of you. Does anybody have on the board have a question for any of the administrators who reported?
I have a question. I just want to say thank you that, I know there's been a lot of mention about like how some things may not be fully up and running, but I just wanted to want to say thank you that my children today, their teachers, they saw their teachers today, they had things to do. You know, we were able to provide some semblance of like school normals, normalcy and to have to pivot within 24 hours and still be able to provide families with something is still a huge accomplishment. And so I just want to say thank you again to all the staff is doing to kind of make this feel somewhat close to something like normal.
I have a, I guess, a question and a comment. I am wondering if we can somehow encourage kids to have surgical masks versus gaiters or the cloth masks because surgical masks are kind of the ones that would be more protective. And as we're, you know, making these, the spaces smaller, I think it would be even more important to have surgical masks for our students and definitely staff as well.
Sephora, do you want to talk about the N95s that you're ordering?
I believe it's going to be in Samantha's statement, but we have ordered the N95 mask. We ordered 2,000 of them and then we placed a second order. Samantha, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, so we got 5,095 total. We got 3,000 for teachers and 2,000 for youth. And that was just kind of our beginning. We luckily identified a local vendor who has them in stock, which was the hardest part. We got a great price, actually was lower than the state contracts and they should be here Friday. The, the vendor is actually delivering, hand-delivering them in person on Friday for us to make sure we get them in time for the open on Tuesday.
Thank you, that's amazing. Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Um, moving on to item, thank you so much for all your hard work because it has been an incredibly difficult 24 hours and post-holiday time. So thank you. Item 4G Semester One Discipline Attendance Data Presentation. Middleton and McCracken, I don't know how you're going to break that up.
Yeah, so I can go ahead and go first. Let me just share my screen. See if I share the right thing. All right. Do you see Champ in his winter gear? Awesome. All right. So we're, I'm going to kind of walk through attendance and behavior data. If it's okay, I figure I'll take questions at the end. So a huge shout out to Ruth Sinker, the behind the scenes invisible yet ever so present Ruth Sinker. So this is her winter Champ design. I don't know how she does it, but it's amazing. So when we talk about attendance protocols at Middleton and McCracken is very similar. Obviously, attendance is extremely important and is often an extremely high indicator of student success in school. And so we do put a lot of emphasis on students attending and helping to support families if by chance students are in need of attendance support. So our Middleton protocol is that at the fifth absence, our school nurse contacts home and sends an informational letter just so that parents are aware of an immediate contact that they have at the school. At the seventh absence, a support staff member contacts home and support staff is our school psych or either of our school's social workers. And so again, they're just contacting home as a support, a partner in helping students to come to school every day. At the 10th absence, so I as the Assistant Principal mail home a 10-day absence letter. We talk to the grade level and teacher team, the problem-solving teams, just to start to help support and start that conversation at the team level. And then if needed, we call a meeting at that point. At the 15th absence, again, we mail home a letter and then we look at an individualized attendance plan. So really bringing in and partnering with the parent and the student, the teacher if needed, our SST, our student, student services team. And then we look at that attendance plan really as a motivator to help the student come to school. Around the 18th and 19th absence, again, we're constantly partnering with the parent to support the student's arrival to school. And then if needed, if it does become a truancy situation, then we do need to report it to the regional office of education. So that's just a little bit of background as we jump into some of the data that we'll be looking at. So this is a total of Middleton students, total number of Middleton students in trimester one. You can kind of look at the number breakdown. So the numbers in the middle are the number of students and then the grade levels and percentages are off to the side. So we have about 20% of students in each grade at Middleton. These are our trimester one absences by grade. These are the total number of absences, just so you kind of see the breakdown. And then this breaks that down even more. So the, this is the total number of students with five or more absences by grade. And these two graphs very much reflect each other. And so what this tells me is just that if we are really working to reduce the number of absences, we're likely also working to reduce the number of students that have repeated absences. And so, you know, hence why working on attendance and partnering with families is so important. This is, this graph reflects the number of students who have five or more and 10 or more absences. And so you'll notice that our numbers for five or more absences are very similar to before the pandemic and now after that pandemic year. During that pandemic year, you know, it is obviously significantly lower just because the way we were recording absences are different because it was by period from Middleton. And so there was a difference there. So the number of full days does end up being less. We did have students reporting online, which was obviously excellent. And some of that is a result of sort of the record-keeping of it all. And then if you look at the 10 or more, we do have twice as many students this year with 10 or more absences than we did two years ago when we were in person the last time. And so that is, you know, information that we do want to keep in mind and maybe that is representative that this year and the pandemic just coming, well, still continuing through the pandemic is challenging for all of us. And so partnering with families is ever more important. This is the total number of unexcused absences for trimester one. And so you'll notice that two years ago, there were 363. And this year, you know, then we had the pandemic year. And then this year, we do have significantly fewer in trimester one, which is excellent. And so that's very exciting to see. And then this is the breakdown of unexcused absences by grade. So this is the number of students that have had at least one unexcused absence. And so this is just kind of interesting because it's basically And so this is just kind of interesting because it's basically showing about half of students, for whatever reason, have at least one excused absence. So I'm also interpreting this as just the need for constant communication with families around the importance of attendance. You know, anything we can put out in the weekly around attendance, just to kind of help support some of those. Middleton's tardy protocols reflect very closely our absence protocols. And so at the fifth tardy, the school nurse contacts home. At the seventh tardy, again, a support staff member, so social work or school psych calls home. At the 10th tardy, the assistant principal mails home a 10-day letter and refers the student to that grade level team. We get parents involved so that everyone is aware to kind of talk through an initial plan. And then at the 15th tardy, we just sort of formalize that. So it's a more formal letter. We talk with the school-based team. It's a more formal tardy plan. And then we look to implement that and we get the student involved, obviously, to get their feedback, to make sure that it's motivating and exciting to help them come to school on time. And then for anything additional, we just, again, continue to collaborate with the family. So this is overall tardy data for this year. So in trimester one, these are the total number of tardies. So that pandemic year, we did have an increase in tardies. This year, it's a little bit lower than 1920. These are the trimester one tardies by grade. And then these are the total number of students with five or more tardies. So we're really looking at between 5% and 10% of a grade level. And then we'll move on to Middleton behavior data. So again, just to give you a little bit of background, this is Middleton's behavior response plan. And Priya will talk about something that's very similar at McCracken. But we do sort of classify behaviors and discipline into three tiers. So we have our tier one, tier two, and tier three. And all of them really use restorative practices as the basis for everything we're trying to accomplish. Because really, restorative practice is all about trying to help understand why certain actions take place. And then learning new skills or retraining, trying to look at how we can respond. And then making sure that we repair the relationship if any damage or harm was caused. And so when we look at those tier one behaviors, these are classroom-managed behaviors. So these are managed by the teachers. And these might be one-time infrequent behaviors. For example, a student doesn't have a pencil or a student, you know, yells during class, something like that. No referral is written. It tends to just be a quick, you know, whisper redirection or a tap on the desk. It's very quick. Tier two behaviors are repetitive. So it might be some of these tier one behaviors that are repetitive. These can be classroom-managed, or they may require support from an administrator. And at times referrals are written, but not always. And then those tier three behaviors are the ones that are more significant. So it might be physical aggression, anything, weapons or weapon look-alikes, things like that. So those are admin-managed. And then referrals are written and other consequences are assigned. And even in the tier three zone, we're still looking at restorative practice as the base of everything we're trying to accomplish. So we still want to help the student understand, for example, if a student pushes someone during a game of football. We still want that student to understand what, you know, reflect on what happened. Think about what their body was doing, why that was the choice that they decided to make. Teach them the new skills. So that might be partnering with a social worker or the teacher to look at, you know, emotional regulation or breathing exercises or calming strategies or advocacy strategies so that they're able to advocate for themselves. So teaching a new skill, helping them to implement it. And then also repairing any harm that was caused. So that could be a mediated conversation. It could be an apology letter. It could be, again, just a reflection if, for whatever reason, they're not ready to talk about what happened. They can write a reflection. So those restorative pieces really are, we know that those are the teaching pieces of what happens. And then the referrals is that documentation layer. So at Middleton, for trimester one, we had 29 total referrals. So this is the breakdown by grade. There are no referrals for first grade. We had 12 students total who received referrals. So this is that breakdown by grade. And then this is our referral data by ethnicity. So on the left graph, you see the overall ethnicity at Middleton. The black bold numbers represent the number of students that fall into each of those ethnicities. And then the right graph talks about the referrals themselves, not the number of students. So for example, in the white ethnicity bar, 41% of all the referrals were from students who are identifying as white. Which means that 12 of the referrals were from students that identify as white. If you, so obviously it seems a little bit disproportionate to the population of Middleton. When you look at the number of students that actually fall into the categories, not necessarily the number of referrals, it's a little bit more proportionate. So for example, in the Hispanic Latino, one student received eight referrals. And so there was a lot of partnership on that team to help support the student. And so there are actually three students that fall in that Hispanic Latino category. And then same with the Black and African-American, one student earned these five referrals. And so that is representative of one student. And then lastly, the total student population of students with IEPs. So our total Middleton population is represented in the pie graph. So the total number of students without IEPs is 489. The total number of students with IEPs is 61 at Middleton. And so this box in the right kind of explains a little bit more. So students with IEPs earned three total referrals during trimester one, which is 10% of our total referrals. And then these are the frequently referred behaviors. So at Middleton, it was physical aggression, inappropriate language, peer conflict, and disruption. So that is all. I will go ahead and stop sharing my screen.
Before the board asks any questions or makes any comments, I just want to really, this is 100% Stephanie. I did not have anything to do with it. She did all the, everything. So I just want to give a shout out to Stephanie. In addition to helping me contact Trace and do all the phone calls and everything, she did this too. So thank you, Stephanie. That was very well done. Thank you. I love my partner.
Agreed. Thank you. Thank you so much, Stephanie. I'm just gonna ask my one question first. So in your chart, I just, maybe you said this and I missed it. We have absences. Can, I just need a definition for absences versus, and it said unexcused absences. So when we say absences, are we, what's an absence and what's, what's the difference between an absence and an unexcused absence?
Yeah, thank you for asking. So we have, and this is in our letters that we send home as well. There are excused and unexcused absences. So for example, if a student is ill or a student, like I'm thinking of bereavement. So those are considered excused absences. So unexcused absences just fall in things that are not those. So it might be a student is out of town. Or there are a couple other codes that fall in that unexcused category. Or like if no reason is given.
And then how, where do our students who were identified, like our COVID students are like COVID positive and contact, you know, contact tracing students, are those numbers in here too? Like, are those excluded from this if we want to compare it to the pre-COVID year?
Yeah. No, they are in here. They are coded as excused. So for the purposes of the word absence in this presentation, it's all codes. Except on the slides where it indicates unexcused.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
So all of the kids, if we are isolating them because they're COVID positive or if we're quarantining them because they are considered close contacts either at school or at home, those are all considered excused absences. But if parents are choosing to keep their children home right now, if we have not said they're considered a close contact or need to isolate, those are considered unexcused absences. If that helps.
No, it does because it makes me, and I don't know, it would be interesting to see the number like, not to give you more work, I'm just curious if in fact our numbers are actually like, lower than 2019, 2020? Because if we pull out the COVID-positive students and the contact trace students, presumably they would actually show, they would be at school, right? But they can't be. So I guess I just kind of, you know, if we pulled those numbers out, in some ways, then the 2021, 22 number would be actually a lot, I'm wondering would it be, how significantly lower would it be?
But what you need to remember is if they are quarantining or isolating because we've told them to, they're actually considered present. So they're not absent and they're not unexcused.
Oh, I thought you said they were absent.
Sorry, I misspoke. I'm sorry. If they are, if we are telling them not to be here and they're logging on remotely, we have a code in our attendance system that's called remote present.
Okay. All right. That's what I misunderstood.
Sorry. No, no, no. I misspoke. Sorry about that.
Okay. So this, like, for example, on slide number six says, total number of students' absences is 70 with five or more. Those are not our, assuming they show up remotely, right? They log in remotely. Those are not our COVID cases.
Most of our kids are, they want to be in school, their parents want them to be in school, and they're having them log on. Sure, we have a few that don't. I would say our biggest, what I've noticed is we have a lot of students who leave the country for a significant period of time, which is accounts for a lot of our, of our absences.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for that detailed reporting. Does anybody on the board have a question for Stephanie?
Yeah, Stephanie, I just wanted to say thank you for just a presentation that was easy to understand and very clear. And thank you for your clarity around the demographic imbalances with discipline. I appreciate that. I mean, when I saw those numbers at first, it was like alarm bells. And I mean, I'm still concerned. But I am less concerned than I was because the numbers are so small. So it's hard to infer larger systemic problems from something like that. That said, I'm glad we're keeping an eye on it. And I hope we continue to because as we know, our entire system is set up to criminalize children of color, so.
Of course, thank you.
I have a few questions as well. How are we incorporating the five mental health days into the absences that were just passed?
Yeah, sure. So that law did just pass. It was started in January. And so we do have an attendance code for that as well. And so parents looking at Power School can also see MH in a student's for a student's absence that was taken as a mental health day. But those would be an excused absence.
And have we seen that we have a large number of students that have not come back either because their parents are fearful of transmission of COVID? Or they may have family members who may be immune-compromised. We've seen a large number of kids that have not returned.
It's not a large number, but I mean, there are, we do have a small population, maybe like a handful that that, you know, falls into that category.
So what happens with those kids as far as education goes? Do we have like?
Sorry, go ahead.
No, just do we offer them a remote option? Is there anything that we can offer them so they're not kind of falling behind?
Yeah. So as of right now, we're only offering remote learning to our students who are quarantined or in isolation.
Okay. And I think my last question is, one of the talking about physical aggression. And I was wondering if we can, we don't have to do this right now, but maybe come up with a definition of physical aggression because at times, we know that certain kids may look more aggressive or we may view them as more aggressive. And so, you know, I'm not sure, it could be kind of left up to interpretation. And I'm concerned that kids who may be viewed as that could be kind of getting disciplined or referred more frequently. So if we can come up with some kind of a definition to kind of, you know, so it could be across the board, people understanding.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Right now, we use what's written in the student handbook. But it would definitely be worth going back and looking at that and sort of analyzing it as a district. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions as well. Thank you so much, Stephanie, for this presentation. It was fantastic. So much what Maureen said, very easy to follow, very concise, to the point. And your explanations were super thorough. Quick question about the attendance protocols, and this is kind of similar to Emily's question. So just to clarify, are these just for unexcused absences or absences in general?
We do this for absences in general because we just, we want to make sure we're checking in with all of our students, no matter the reason they're absent. Even especially now, like if a student is out for five days for anything COVID-related, we know why. But we're still checking in because we just want, we're just, you know, anything we can do to support while a student is out. We do consider it our obligation.
Okay, totally makes sense. And then thank you for the comparison for number of absences before the pandemic to versus after the pandemic, or like, I guess like after our pandemic year. For say, I think it's really helpful to showcase trends in comparison to when we were during a time of normalcy. Otherwise, those numbers would have been a little alarming. So I appreciate that proactivity. And the last quick question I had was, in terms of tardy protocols, are those tiered in any way? Like is a five-minute tardy treated the same way as a 20-minute tardy, for example?
They're not exactly tiered. At some point during, like, basically after nine o'clock, it sort of counts as like a late arrival, if you will, versus a tardy. So it's not, it's not really tiered. We do have, I've asked the fabulous Ruth at times to run sort of the number of minutes a student has missed just because that further gives us more data about how significant those tardies can be and how many hours and days of instruction is, a student is missing just due to tardies. And so that has been helpful information in conversations with parents at times. But to your point, it isn't quite tiered the same way as, like, the behavior plan is, for example.
And also, the reason it's not tiered is because we have state guidelines. And my information is old, but the last time that I was in a principal role, it was 20 minutes. If they, if they were late after 20 minutes, it was considered a half-day absence. I'm not sure what the state guidelines are now. But that's why we put the minute, we put the minutes in when we do it in Power School and then the state codes it. I'm sure if Ruth is on here, she could definitely answer that more intelligently than myself, but.
More than sufficient, very helpful. I was honestly just wondering, but thank you. I appreciate it.
I have one quick question. Are religious holidays coded differently? And I guess the reason why I'm asking, like, I understand it's an excused absence. But you know, once you get past five or seven, some different things are triggered. Are those religious holidays that are absences? Are those religious holidays that are absences, are they put in that same pot? Or are they taken out of that pot to trigger further conversations?
Yeah, no, they're taken out. They count as excused absences. And so, again, if the student misses five days, we might call. But we're aware that some of those absences are the result of a religious holiday.
I mean, I would say in general, if we have a student, I mean, we have multiple students out, unfortunately, who are out because their parents have cancer and are receiving treatment or whatever the case may be. And we take every single case separately. We look at each student, what have they missed, why have they missed? And then we address it appropriately. So we're never going to consider a kid truant who's been out for three weeks because their parent is undergoing a significant medical, medical situation.
And in those cases, do we offer remote for those kids? I mean, because they're not COVID positive, but they obviously can't be present. Is there anything we can do to make sure that they're still getting an equitable education?
No, I know, it's, it's so hard, because we all care so deeply about our families and about, and about our kids. But our policy and procedure is that we don't offer them remote instruction, because typically speaking, our teachers are focusing on the kids that are in school. Obviously, right now, a majority of their kids, not right now, this is an adaptive pause, so they're all gone. But let's say next Tuesday, Katie Hollenberg has, you know, 17 kids in front of her, maybe three are at home. So would it be easy for her to say, oh, yes, I can do that, because I have a student who needs it? But then you're opening a can of worms, because in normal times, that's not what we have. We want Katie to be focusing on the kids in school, in person, in her class. And so we just, we've kind of held tight, if you will, to the fact that, no, we're not going to provide remote instruction, but we will obviously provide as many resources, materials, Zern, Seesaw, Google, you know, things like that for the students that we can, but just not the full remote instruction.
I, you know, I want to, just piggybacking off of that, you know, I want to say, you know, my students were some that were home last week and were not able to stream. And, but also as a teacher, I know that teaching hybrid is the worst of both worlds for teachers. And it is absolutely like a no-win situation for kind of anyone involved. So I appreciate your, your, your efforts to protect the teachers, the integrity of the teaching classroom. So thank you.
And one other quick question. I, I know some of the letters that we sent out previously were not seen necessarily as very culturally sensitive regarding absences and tardies. And I'm wondering, or maybe suggesting, if we could just be really mindful of kind of the language that we're using and, you know, that the parents are understanding, so they don't get scared if, you know, they're not proficient English readers. So if we could just be mindful of that piece when we send them.
Thank you for that. We always partner them with a phone call in advance as well to hopefully mitigate some of that, but that, yeah, that's good feedback. Thank you. Any other?
Yeah, that is an interesting question, like, if the parent isn't fluent in the language. I guess it would be an interesting discussion, maybe for the, for the, I'm having a total brain fart. The new, is it the bilingual parent? No. Our new kind of E L parent advisory committee, which I'm blanking. It'd be an interesting discussion, just about how to make sure that parents are, you know, kind of, well, able to read the letter completely and kind of, you know, then be able to follow up with the schools on, you know, next steps to the, to their fullest ability.
And as we have students that, you know, come up whose family's language may not, the first language isn't English, we always, again, try to partner with a translator in some form. So whether it be an in-district translator as part of that phone call or a meeting, you know, to have a translator present, or we do have the album service that we're using sparingly, we always try to make sure that, that, that the parent, you know, is able to interpret the message.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions? All right.
All right.
And Priya, are you doing the?
I'm doing the McCracken, yeah, the McCracken data, yeah. Thanks, Emily. I'm just gonna get this together and share my screen. All right. Let me present this. Can everyone see this? It's coming up. I think it's still loading. Does that look good? Yep, awesome, great. So the format you'll see from McCracken is very similar to Middleton's. Some of our protocols you'll see are very similar as well. We'll start off with attendance, and I want to give a huge shout out to Mary Madigan, our school nurse who stays on top of attendance all the time in addition to managing COVID, quarantining students, answering questions. She's truly a rock star, so. All right, so I will summarize some of this, because like I said, our protocols are pretty similar to, to Middleton. So at the fifth absent, you could see there's, this is a very much a tiered approach. So at the fifth absence, our school nurse makes a contact home. The seventh absence, we have a SST member that also contacts home. This year, obviously, because of the absences due to quarantining or isolation, our student support staff has, they've contacted home more as, like, can we do anything? Can we help in any way? You know, that's been the approach with our families. At the 10-day, the 10th absence, we, we send a 10-day letter home and also refer the student to the grade level PST. I will say the 10th, 15th letters are to help us basically help support families. It gives us data as well to be able to understand, like, what interventions we can put in place for that particular student and, you know, what the reasons for those absences are. Our primary partner the last two years for excessive truancy has been the Regional Office of Education. They have been wonderful. They ask us about our tiered approach. They ask us about our data, what steps we've taken to support attendance. And as far as the Skokie Police Truancy Officer, that's more of, we would partner with them if necessary, if for a wellness check. So for example, if we've been trying to contact home and we can't contact home, we've been trying to contact a parent and can't, you know, the, the role of the Skokie Police Officer would just help us to, again, just make sure everything's safe with the student. So that's our attendance protocols. And then, let's see, our, here we go. Our total number of McCracken students, so you could see here, our seventh grade is our largest class. So we have 104 in eighth grade, 118 in sixth grade, and then 129 in seventh. And then these are the total absences by grade during trimester one. This is a full day absence. So what's considered an absence is a full day absence. And include, it does include students who needed to quarantine or isolate during trimester one. You'll notice we have more absences with the sixth grade, because sixth graders weren't actually eligible for vaccination until almost near the end of trimester one. So, you know, which caused the, the necessary quarantining or isolation. And then here are the total students with five or more absences. So again, you'll see sixth grade a little higher in tier, in trimester one. It'll be interesting to see how this trimester looks now that more of our students have been vaccinated. And then if we look at this next slide, this gives us a comparison for the last three years. So in 2021, you'll notice that we had 48 students with five or more absences, and then eight students with 10 or more. And this is all during trimester one. Last year, you saw that there were, there were less absences because we were in a remote learning year. And then in 2019, you'll see the absences. And I know, Emily, you brought up a point earlier, like, what would this look like without the quarantining or isolation? And that's a really interesting point when you're looking at this attendance across the years. You know, one student, I will say for trimester one, in one grade, one student actually counted for 18% of the total absences. So again, that leads us to the actions that we take where we connect with teachers, we partner with families, we try to understand how we can support the individual student. But as we all know, this, this has been an interesting year, just as last year was. Here are tardy attendance protocols, so again, very similar to Middleton's. The one thing I will say is our big change this year is last year, there was a consequence after, or in previous years, there was a consequence after the third tardy. And we did change that to having a conference or a restorative reflection after the fifth tardy. And that's more in line with the other middle schools in the Skokie area as well. So, and with tardies, when students come in to reflect, we do have conversations as far as, you know, what's causing the tardies? Could the student benefit from being on a bus? What other supports can we give the student or the family to help decrease the tardies? And all these protocols are just a way for us to come up with an individualized student plan and to problem solve, so that we have a way to support our students and their attendance at school and overall success, obviously, which leads to overall success. So you'll see, this is the total tardiness by grade. Again, seventh grade has the largest class. I will say for seventh grade also, there was one student who accounted for 17% of the overall seventh grade tardies, this during trimester one. And then, oh, let me go back. So, and then this is the total students with five or more tardies. So eight for sixth grade, 13 for seventh grade, and then 10 for eighth grade. And then overall, if we look at the last few years, the overall tardy data by year, and you could see in 2021, we had 300. Last year was a remote learning year where students were responsible and families were responsible to make sure they were logging in by a certain time. And then 2019, we have 178. So these are some of our positive attendance interventions. You know, we have, we partner with our MTSS team and talk about attendance when we meet once, once a month. So this, recently, we discussed and implemented a monthly raffle for students with zero or one tardy. And so we did that for the month of December. We have a raffle and recognition at our Hornets Hive assemblies per trimester for being on time to school. We also, if necessary, with a student with excessive absences, we have a tier-two program called Check and Connect, and it's a mentoring program. So our student support team refers a student, and they basically about two to three times a week meet with a teacher mentor or a staff mentor, and they just have a quick check-in, like a two-minute conversation to be able to just see how things going. And we believe that attendance can improve if students have a stronger connection to the school. And so part of this mentoring program is to help students develop that connection. And then finally, we have these incentivized attendance plans for students with excessive tardiness. So those are always great conversations, because I always ask students, well, you know, what are we working towards? And we, you know, they get points or buzz bucks or something like that as, as they improve their attendance. And, you know, so it's, it's always, those are fun conversations to have. All right, so our behavior data, so just like Stephanie had said earlier, we also have a tiered approach, tiered one, tier two, tier three. I'll read our behavior philosophy, so that, you know, we have an understanding of how we handle behavior at McCracken. So our goal at McCracken is to partner with families to establish and maintain a safe educational environment where all students are able to reach their full potential academically, socially, and emotionally. We explicitly teach, model, and reinforce clear and specific behavior expectations. Staff members guide students through challenging situations using a problem-solving approach, which encourages students to reflect on their actions, accept responsibility, empathize with others, and then repair relationships. Consequences are equitable, logically determined, and related to students' behavior and developmentally appropriate to the age of the child. So just to give you a little background about how we approach behavior at McCracken. So as far as total referrals go, seventh grade has the highest enrollment, as I mentioned before, of all three grades, so hence the most number of referrals. Seventh grade had 90 referrals, eighth grade had 57 this year, and sixth grade had 42 referrals. And that also includes tardy referrals as well. And then this is the total number of students by grade with referrals. So you'll see there were 22 students in the eighth grade, 30 students in the seventh grade, and then 24 students in the sixth grade. And I, I will note that one student had 24 referrals, which was the 13% of total referrals. So in cases where we have students with multiple referrals like that, we implement a tiered response plan, which includes consultation with the teachers, parents, the student support team members. And then we implement individualized behavior plans based on data. So if there's a particular support put in place, we monitor it, we see what the data shows us, and then whether that support is working, or do we need to adjust the support? Or do we need to partner with, with someone else to help support the student? So here is our behavioral data by ethnicity. So you'll see that there's two bars for students that identify as each of these ethnicities. Overall ethnicity is in purple, and then the referrals by ethnicity is in blue. So you'll see that, for example, students that identify as white make up 35% of our student population. But then 20, 29% of students that identify as white, 29% of the referrals were from students that identified as white. So we want to see the bars close to the same percentage, since that would show an equitable distribution of behavioral referrals by ethnicity. If we have a subgroup of students that are either above or below a 5% threshold of the total subgroup population, that would warrant a closer analysis of the data. For example, if there's one student that's earning a large majority of the behavioral referrals, we'll ask, why are we under or over-referring students? If there's one ethnicity that's being referred and why? So that's something we do delve deep into, depending on when we, when we look at this data. There were, I could say that there were 13 referrals by one student of an, one ethnic background and 24 referrals by another student of another ethnic background. And those two students together made up 20% of the total referrals, so just to give you an idea. And then these are our frequently referred behaviors for trimester one. So you could see what is considered as defiance or not listening to directions. So you could see what is considered as defiance or not listening to directions. Was our top behavior followed by inappropriate language, technology misuse, disruption. And then our tardy to school and physical aggression, the numbers on the side, for example, with defiance, the 54 on the side, that's the number of referrals. So. 23% of all referrals were defiance, 14% of all referrals were inappropriate language and so on and so forth. So one last thing I was going to say about the behaviors is we do respond to this. Sorry about that. So for example, one thing we noticed is that there are certain behaviors that become more prominent in certain grades. So for, I could give you an example, for example, in sixth grade, we realized in near the end of trimester one. That. Students weren't necessarily reporting incidents to us. And so. You know, and there's multiple ways students can report incidents, obviously verbally or telling a teacher, but we also have an anonymous reporting form. That's shared every day through our home, homeroom announcements if students would like to complete it. And so, you know, we examine these behaviors and so for me, and we try to respond. So for example, with that sixth grade. Not reporting or trying to, we basically created a lesson for an extended advisory. About how to be an up standard. And so we thought that in response to some of the behaviors we're seeing for each grade level. We want to be proactive in order to prevent more behaviors in that line. So. So that's where this data really helps us because it helps us kind of navigate what we're seeing and what the needs of the students are. So as far as the to- total student population IP data. You can see here that's. Students with IEPs. Twenty, first of all, 24% of our student population are students with IEPs. And students with IEPs earned 65 total referrals during trimester one. And that's about 34%. Of total referrals. And then here's a comparison across trimesters. So you could see in trimester one. This year, we had a total of 189 referrals. Last year we had 14. It's hard to cause too many issues when you're at home. And then in 2019, 2020, there were 217. Now, like I mentioned before, as far as our threshold for tardy to school referrals, we increased it to five. So you'll see that there are less tardy to school office referrals. This trimester. So our total behavior referrals are very similar to what we saw in 2019, 2020. And then as far as our interventions go, you'll see that, first of all, before. I go into this, I will say, this is not a complete exhaustive list of the interventions that we offer. We look at the whole child to determine referrals for like social work referrals or. Any kind of outside services referrals. We have increased our restorative interventions, which are proactive and reflective. So that we can sustain that change in behavior. That's our goal. So you could see with tier three and tier two partner, parent partnerships are so important. And as Stephanie said earlier, we also partner with. Basically either teachers or assistants, or we've partnered with the EL Parent Center in the past. If we need to find translators in order to connect with families. We have regularly in the last two years partnered with Niles Township to offer. Supports for families that are new in the country. Or that are facing economic hardship of any sorts. So they've, Niles Township has been an amazing partner for McCracken. Lunch, as far as our tier three referrals, we do lunch recess restorative reflections. We have after school restorative reflections. We come up with individualized behavior plans depending on the behavior that we see. And what supports we could do this year with the help of our social workers, we actually have a desk in the office. We call it the take to desk. And so it's, it's private. And if a student basically needs a break during the day, they can come there, they can use, we have supplied fidgets. There's a Chromebook where students can listen to music. There's origami paper, there's drawing paper. It's a way for a student to basically take to or reset. So that they can go back to the class. Ready to learn, you know, and that's also involves a conversation or a check in with myself or Mr. Beam or Ms. Ariola. And then as far as our tier two referrals, one thing that is also new this year is Zen Zone. I know it's been in our weekly newsletter, but it's a great way. It's about once a month, our student support team has organized it and. Students come up to the library and they work on craft projects. They focus on mindfulness activities. There's always soothing music playing. So it's a nice. Alternative for kids that may not want to necessarily go to recess that day and could use the Zen Zone as just a support to, again. Just a calming environment and check in with a social worker if they wanted to. We have used peer mediation this year as well. And then as far as our tier one interventions, we do grade level raffles. We do a weekly buzz buck prize wheel. I tell the kids, it's sort of like a prizes, right? Where they spin a wheel and they get to see a prize and you know, buzz bucks is a great way to positively. Reinforce good behavior. Our teachers, staff, instructional assistants, we all use champs. That's part of our regular vocabulary in McCracken. Our second step curriculum. Is our SEL curriculum, which is utilized in during extended advisory. Teachers also send home positive postcards. So that's another great. Support that we have a behavior response and then our Hornets Hive assemblies, which are a lot of fun. And so. Again, kids get recognized and they're rewarded for these behaviors like being on school on time or. Following champs expectations, buzz bucks, et cetera. So, all right. And then our restorative reflections program. So I'll read the purpose. And then I'll tell you a little snippet about how it's going so far. The restorative reflections program is to support students with tier two or tier three infractions. Utilizing a restorative justice approach. So serving as an after school program. Students attending restorative reflections have the opportunity to discuss and reflect their behaviors. Which have caused harm to themselves or others. We adopt a circle discussion teaching strategy. So students are able to speak about their behavior, the causes, effects and natural consequences to move forward. And these natural consequence can, excuse me, consequences for actions are highlighted during the circle discussions. If a student doesn't want to participate in the circle discussion, that's totally fine and we can assign. And either an independent reflection, I usually give the kids about, you know, a few choices, what they want to choose. So. For example, if a student is doing a reflection during recess. You know, our kids are wonderful. I'll say overall, we have some amazing kids. And they're always, you know, when I, when I talk to them, I will say most of the time, they will say, yep, Ms. Amin, that was me, you know, or something like that. And I'm like, okay. So let's talk about what other choices we could have made in this moment, you know, and. And we'll talk through the, you know, sometimes students say, well, I was angry at that moment. I didn't make the right decision. I could have made a better decision. And so we talked about, well, what, what can we do next? How can we repair that relationship? And so they'll say, well, I could write a letter. I've had students participate. And create a message, you know, for a classroom using art, which was really cool. They, they wanted to draft their own poster and so. It was a poster about kindness because it was related to their infraction and the behavior. And what was cool about that story is the students were only required to stay for one day after school. And they ended up staying, I, I want to say two days after school and then a whole week during recess. And it was not required, but they're like, Ms. Amin, we really have to finish this, you know, so. Again, I think restorative practices are so effective because students take their own responsibility for their actions and they want to fix it and. You know, I'm a big believer in art being therapeutic as well. So. So I, at this point, I'm going to stop sharing and if there are any questions.
Thank you so much. This is really, really helpful to understand both of you. Thank you. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Ms. Amin, Maureen?
Yeah, I guess it, it's, yeah, I like that we're using positive. I mean, all the restorative justice work that you're doing is great. The work about positive reinforcement for being on time rather than kind of punishment is great. And I really, again, appreciate a thorough and. At the same time, sort of concise way of understanding it. The one thing I would just say is. When I think about tardies, tardies are an adult problem for the most part. I know in middle school, you know, sometimes they get themselves there, but ultimately. Usually if a student is suffering from excessive tardies, we know that that's, you know, they're, they're not adults. So as much as, you know, I think sometimes for kids that come from a household where. Getting out the door is not always easy for a variety of problems. When there's rewards for something that's ultimately not within their control. It can alienate them from the school community. So I just as much as possible acknowledging that giving a reward for. Attendance or for. For time being on time. Kind of leaves out kids who have chronic health issues, who have a home life situations that make it difficult to be on time. That's just my two cents.
Thank you, Maureen. No, I mean, we take that into consideration. This is where partnering with families is so important. In the last couple of years, we've done home visits just so that the parents and the families know that. There's a face behind that phone call that happens and we truly do care. Sometimes it's also, I, I've had some recent conversations where families were unclear about tardies. They're like, well, we dropped off our kid at eight o'clock. And so I said, well, you know, they do actually have to be in the classroom by eight. So, you know, so some of those kind, and this is where again, having those relationships with the families, having those relationships with the kids. Helps out so much. And we definitely, I know we do. At, at the end of the day, the fact that they're making it to school and you're right, for some families, it's really hard. For some kids, it's really hard. That's an accomplishment in itself. So.
I have just a couple of questions and maybe a comment. Again, the word defiance is another word that I'm wondering if we can kind of clarify a little bit better. But am I understanding this, the slide about the student, total student population, the IEP data? That 34% of total referrals are. Kids with IEPs.
So I can, yeah, 34% of total referrals were students with IPs. I will say that. 15 students with IEPs received referrals. So. If that helps with any of that data. And there was one student, I will say, one student sometimes makes up multiple referrals. And then as far as your question about defiance, you know, defiance is categorized. I know it's a strong word. So I get where you're coming from. Just not following direction. So it could be simple as maybe not wearing a mask properly after they've been instructed to numerous times. To not following the directions of administrator, you know, so there's a range in, in that category as well.
And thank you for that. And I, I don't know what to compare this IEP data to. But I'm just wondering, are we kind of, I mean, is this, does this number seem high? Or is this kind of, I guess to me, it seems like a high number, but I don't know if anybody else is kind of.
I mean, it is when it's compared to the population. So. Again, it's like when we're looking at those subgroups, we want them to be close to the same percentage of the student population. So. To me, when I look at that, it's, you know, 24% of our, if, if students with IEPs make up 24% of our student population. So we should see a similar number with our referrals. But then we have to, that causes us to dig deeper into that data. And as, you know, as Priya was talking about. Now we're looking at a smaller number of students earning a larger number of referrals. And now we're talking about one to two students who are triggering that high number of referrals. What are we doing for that student? Are we partnering with our, with our, you know, with the student's case manager? Are we partnering with the student's family? Does that student have a, you know, a behavior intervention plan in place? Does the team need to come together and develop a, you know, a more. You know, appropriate plan that's meeting that student's needs. So, you know, it's, this is what's causing us to look closer at that to determine. Are we over, you know, representing that subgroup by issuing too many referrals? And what is that telling us? So I, that is, you know, a number that we dug deeper into.
And, and I'll just kind of tag into that as well, Nancy, which is, I think, Priya, you said 15 students total made up that number. So we did have. One student that was triggering a lot of those referrals. That student now does have a more supportive plan. And so I think we will see those numbers drop as we look at the. Second trimester data.
Thank you for that. That, that sounds great.
I was going to add one more thing. NTDSC has been invaluable as a partner this year too, as we're talking about IEP data. And that's, I, I thank you to Angela for that too. They've, they've really helped us. Try to understand how we can better support students.
One more thing I wanted to add, and I think this is a congratulations to the administration at both buildings, is that with. Knowing that our kids had a rough time being home all year, knowing that they're out of the practice of being in school. Knowing that some of those social behaviors are rusty, I mean, for us and for them. I think it's pretty impressive that when you compare it to the, the year before the pandemic, we don't see a substantial rise in referrals. So I think that speaks to the community that you guys have created in the school for the children within the classrooms and your approach to discipline. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Maureen. I was going to add one more thing is when we started off the year, we really did focus on our behavior expectations, you know, and. You know, then that's again, just a proactive approach across the district too.
I'd just like to give another shout out to the teachers because when our kiddos came back in the fall, especially. At Middleton, some of those, some of our students hadn't even been in school yet and they were second graders. And, you know, I would literally, I was a new principal in a new position and I'd walk down the hall and I'd see kids running down the hall and I'd say, hey. Hold on, walking feet and they would just like ignore me and keep running like, right? So they literally had to figure out what does school mean? How do we do school? And our teachers, you know, never once said, we need to write these kids up and we need to call these parents. And. So it's just, it's, it's really been a team effort and everybody has just really realized that these kids have not been in school for a year and a half. And. They're, they're figuring it out and we're figuring it out and it looks very different now than it did four months ago. So thanks.
And I'll just add to that. I think, you know, we're talking about that classroom community and. I know at the last board meeting, we approved the responsive classroom training for all of our staff and that's going to be so huge and helping our staff develop new strategies to help create those classroom communities. So thank you for that because I think we, we need new tricks. We're, we're deal, you know, we need new strategies. We need new tools. Because we're dealing with a different student than we had two or three years ago. So I think, you know, again, that would just be so helpful in helping us. Be proactive in terms of our support for students.
Thank you so much. Um, yeah, that was really helpful and I think, I want to. Thank you, Maureen, for also ma- making that point that, um. You know, it really is remarkable how well the students are, are doing given everything that's been going on. So thank you. All right. So we're going to move on. I'm going to boldly mention that it is 10:03 and. And we have a lot of, we still have like half the agenda to get through. So, you know, if you can be brief in your, in your summations, that would be awesome, given that we do have, we do have a lot to go through. Not that I want to diminish your accomplishments and progress. So I'm going to hand it over to Student Services Update Angela Demay.
Yes, thank you, Emily. I was right there with you already. I was going to be as quick as possible. So I will say, just in terms of our priorities this year, welcoming, we have, as the Community Engagement Committee mentioned, an honorary new Skokie seventy-three and a half member. Lila Nissan had a baby boy earlier this month, and so we're thrilled for her. Relatedly, we do have an upcoming BPAC meeting. That's next week on the nineteenth. It will be totally via Zoom just because of, you know, the metrics that we're dealing with right now. Having said that, I'm presenting on, as well as the, some of the EL teachers on how to support your multilingual learner at home. And so a lot of the conversations tonight, I've been adding to my presentation as we've been going. I think it's helpful for parents to know, you know, here's how you can support attendance. So I'm tweaking that as, as we're going, just based on some of the feedback and some of the data that we reviewed tonight. Regarding our hiring and retention, we are so excited to mention that we do have a new EL teacher at Middleton, Cedrue Youssef. She's been wonderful. She's meshed really well with her team. We couldn't be more excited to have her. Our Student Services Department has just been continuing to, you know, continuing to look at ways that we can make sure that students are receiving their IEP minutes when we're down teachers, when we have students and teachers that are out, just to make sure that we're following best practice and we're giving the students the services to which they're entitled. And then finally, the Whole Child Committee did a staff-wide presentation on the Castle Competencies in addition to the Panorama Playbook. We're going to be rolling out that survey in the next few weeks. So we're really excited about that. It was really well received. So that's it for Student Services.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing no questions, we're going to move on to Dan Schwartz with the CIA update.
Okay, so same thing, just going through our priorities under welcoming. I know that we've had, in my update, I put the Equity Advisory Committee. That meeting is going to be changed to the twenty-second of February. So I want to make you aware of that, just with everything going on with the adaptive pause. Also, in hiring and retention, we welcome back Laura Lee, hopefully pending board approval. She will be working with Ruth on data systems and then being part of the Curriculum Instruction Assessment Team. She was at Meyer Prior and is going to be back at Meyer, but in a little bit different capacity. I know teachers are very excited. And then finally, in instruction professional development, just a couple of things. We're getting ready for some curriculum refinement and vertical articulation at the end of January. I know Principal Tamaru put, told us about the level library, leveled book libraries that we're excited for. Want to give a shout out to Wendy Ma. I don't know if she's even still on the call today. And Tony Cho, the robotics kids at Middleton competed in December. I got, I was lucky enough to go to the competition. In their first year, they were in the top half of their robotics run. So kudos to all of them. I know they didn't make state, but there's next year and it's looking bright for the Bark Bot Robotics. And then finally, just wanted to give a shout out to our instructional coaches. You know, yesterday, when we decided to make the pivot to adaptive pause, the text message from me to all of them was, I need you in the boardroom at twelve thirty. I'll explain more later. They all showed up, those that weren't in COVID quarantine showed up. And within, you know, two hours met our goals of easing the burden on teachers, providing them with information for day one of remote learning. We wanted to give teachers as much asynchronous time for planning as, as possible, which we did. And then finally, to connect with all of our new teachers, that probably goes more with the hiring and retention. But yesterday, I know I contacted our new teachers just to see how they were doing as they moved from in-person to remote. And they were very excited for the call. So thank you, everybody, for your flexibility. That's all from CIA for now.
Any questions from the board? All right. Facilities update Samantha Peterson.
Okay, so I'm also going to do my best to keep this nice and concise. So in general, for facilities, a report this month, at Meyer, we had a boiler repair. So there was a building, there's a building automation system that we have that basically connects all of the different HVAC systems. And it can even, it includes our fire and security system to some extent. And the BAS was having an issue. And so we had, it was actually under warranty, the boiler. And so we had our architect firm, Green and Associates, to bring out a representative from the Warranty Service and worked along with Chris to repair the BAS system. And so the boiler is now functioning properly as it was, as it should. At Meyer, we also had an issue with our makeup unit. So the makeup unit is basically, it pulls air. And it kind of, the boiler makes the heat and then the makeup unit takes air and blows it into the different areas. And so the makeup unit wasn't functioning properly. It had a sensor that wasn't working correctly on it. What it was doing was, it was then causing an alarm, which would shut down our whole system. And then this was causing areas to be too hot or too cold. And so we have had that repaired. We had Johnson controls to come out and that sensor has been replaced. There was a damper door that that was causing a damper, kind of lets the air in and opens up. We had concerns that that damper was stuck open and would be causing some freezing to happen on some of our other components of our heating and air system. And so again, by fixing that sensor on our makeup unit, our damper is now repaired as well. So water heating heater, we had an issue. It was leaking over McCracken. If you went into the boiler room, you saw water all on the floor. On January tenth, we had that water heater replaced. And we are continuing to work in buildings and grounds with, we, under Chris's leadership. I've been really lucky to get a glimpse inside what's been going on in buildings and grounds in the absence of a director. But they've been continually working very hard on our life safety checks, so replacing all of the lights, the filters. We have exit signs where lights are being replaced and that's work that's been consistently occurring over the course of this month. We've had gym floors cleaned and over this adaptive pause in buildings and grounds, we're actually not shutting down like most, you know, or not going remote like most of the other staff members. Unfortunately, we are speeding up. And so we're working really hard during this time to make sure that we're taking advantage of the empty building. And we're having, someone's coming to do another one of the gym floors tomorrow. And I think that that one's at Myers and at Meyer, one of the buildings was already done, so I can't recall exactly. But that is being done and taking care of it this time. District trucks, I wanted to update on. And so we have two trucks in the districts. One, one of them is very old. The truck is, I think, from ninety-six and that truck is actually has an issue with the heating right now. The passenger side heat is all that's working, not the driver's side. It's leaving our driver a little bit cold. We use these trucks for delivery, snow removal, moving equipment and things. And so just kind of a heads up, that repair is over three thousand dollars for the heat. It's not really going to be worth it because the truck is near end of life. And so next year in the budget, it's most likely that we're going to be needing to allocate funds for a new truck for the district. And then cleaning, this is kind of, I think, the thing that everybody was waiting to hear a little bit more about. So throughout the month, we've continued to have concerns with adequacy for staffing from Smith Maintenance. We've been working with them all the time consistently to see how we can support them, you know, asking them, making sure that we have lists from them of what rooms will be cleaned and that we have people who are checking those rooms. But the thing that keeps coming up over and over again are people that aren't present. So we'll work with Smith Maintenance. They'll promise us that they'll have the people there in the morning and then we'll come in in the morning like we did last week and there will be zero people there. Even just this evening, I've been on the phone with Chris. We are supposed to have from Smith, two people over there this evening. And he went into the building. We were told that they were there and the building was dark. They weren't there. So it's just a compounding, you know, issue with Smith. And so what we're going to do is we're going to be bringing in a different cleaning firm, Pure Bright Cleaning, as kind of, on a kind of emergency basis here. They're going to help us out with some additional day porter cleaners. So we don't have to rely solely on Smith Maintenance. And then we are also going to have them help us. We're going to have them start helping us on Monday at Middleton. And we'll be scaling back Smith's participation in our cleaning services. And we're going to go out for bid immediately and we're going to bid, as Dr. Hightower alluded to earlier, all three buildings separately. And what we're hoping for is that that'll, that'll kind of reduce the likelihood that we will be in a situation where the vendor that we're working with can't staff properly. We know that's a national shortage right now on staffing with cleaning. It's not just our district. It's a lot of districts. It's a lot of organizations, including hospitals that are struggling to find cleaners. But I, we do think that going out to bid for the building separately and having a different cleaning service, having more than one cleaning service and multiple supervisors to check each specific building versus one. Our current situation, we have one supervisor who travels the entire district. We think that's going to put us in a much better place. Also, we had a lot of different positive COVID cases over the past week as everyone returned. And with the issues with cleaning, we were unable to meet all of the need, all of the requests that were coming in for fogging. At one point, we had a request. It was for the entire Middleton, right? So we are doing that tomorrow. It'll begin and we've sent out a notice to our staff. So Thursday evening from six to midnight, Meyer will be completely sterilized from head to toe. And Middleton will take place on Friday evening and McCracken on Saturday afternoon. And the, we're going to be using what's called electrostatic, which is the, the best basically kind of and safest kind of sterilization recommended by the CDC at this time. And so the, also, we're going to have the buses sterilized too. So I hope that covers it all. And I'll open it up for questions on facilities now.
Any questions from board members? I've been doing a very good job keeping you all informed. Thank you so much, Samantha, for all of that. You've been doing two jobs, really. Ben, you and Chris have been kind of co-facilit, you know, buildings and grounds facilitation and as well as your finance job. So we really appreciate all the extra work you've been putting in. Thank you so much.
And Mrs. Miller, I'd like to add, President Miller, I'd like to add that for a moment, I thought Dr. Hightower was going to be in cleaning all the different schools herself. And I really think that she would have done it if we didn't come up with another solution. So shout out to Dr. Hightower. I couldn't have done this without her.
Hey, Sam, I do have one quick question at this point, just to make sure this is clear. So you said Friday, the N ninety-five's would be in for the, for the teachers and the students?
That's correct.
And then the building's being fogged tomorrow, the buildings are beginning fogging tomorrow and it will continue through this weekend?
Yes.
All right. So we're on track for Tuesday, sounds like.
Yeah, we're feeling really, really confident about that and just wanting to make sure that, you know, see, health and safety is key and the most important thing for us. So making sure that everything is resolved before then.
Thank you.
Yeah, I will say that when I talked to the board member, what was going on, everybody volunteered to come in and clean again. You know, we are all very committed to making sure we can get our students and our staff back into a clean and safe environment. So thank you so much for all your work on that. All right, moving on to Dr. Sevito.
Our first update is that the Learn Platform, which was approved at last month's board meeting, had our kickoff meeting. And that took place with myself, our network manager, Derek Lowry, and our data specialist, Ruth Sinker. Right now, we're working on uploading the NDPAs for SOPA compliance and adding digital resources to the library as they're getting approved by our legal team. More information on that will be forthcoming as we have more meetings and get the platform ready for outward facing to the community. The Technology Department continues to work with the Business Office on our cybersecurity plans moving forward. To initiate that conversation, staff have been given a preview of the need for multi-factor authentication or two-step verification to begin that process. And thank you to principals for helping me get that word out to teachers. And then our last update is about E-Rate. So the E-Rate program is a service program that's funded through the Federal Universal Service Fund. And it provides funds to assist schools in order to obtain affordable internet access and the related services that go with that. Right now, we're working on our E-Rate form four seventy, which we will be submitting this week. And it will outline the services and materials that we would like to fund in the district. Currently, Skokie School District seventy-three and a half is in need of a network refresh due to outdated access points, switches, UPSs, and also the need for an increased circuit speed. So our plan for improvement will include leveraging E-Rate to make the necessary upgrades to our network. A needs assessment was conducted in December. And in order to mitigate the loss of instructional time, as well as prepare the district for the increased need for reliable infrastructure as we expand and as we add more devices, we are planning upgrades to the networks that include upgrading our access points, switches, UPS units, and our circuit speed. And to accomplish it, we'll be working in tandem with the Business Office and our approved consultants. Just a little bit of background information on some of those items that I mentioned. So our access points are currently six to seven years old. They are losing functionality and we need to provide more density. So we need more of them in order for the internet to be picked up by all of the devices. We have had issues this year with student devices or teacher devices cutting out due to the age of those access points. So they definitely need to be updated. Our switches are also nearing their end of life and they're not currently powerful enough to support the access point infrastructure that the district needs. So that is also on our list of improvements to be made. For our UPSs, some uninterruptible power supplies in the district are older and have severely reduced battery capacity. So the goal is to upgrade those so that we can provide better search protection. We know that some of those power outages have caused a lot of downtime. So we want to increase our uptime should power be lost. And then as far as our circuit speed, our circuit speed needs to be increased, so increasing the speed of the internet that teachers, staff, and students have access to in order to support the heavy network usage that we're seeing, the new access point infrastructure that we need to put in place, and also future learning requirements. We know that technology in the district is only going to expand with time. And we want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students, our teachers, and any expansion that we decide to move forward with. Any questions?
Any board members? Thank you so much, Dr. Sevito. I appreciate all your work and the update. Okay, moving on to Samantha with item L fiscal year twenty-two tentative amended budget.
Okay, I'm going to start the slideshow and then share my screen. I'm presenting in the Zoom isn't necessarily my expertise, expertise. Well, I'll ask everybody to be a little patient with me. So I think allow Zoom to share your screen. Okay. Guys, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get it to share and it's not working quite for me.
It might not be updated, Sam. I had to have tech help me update this week. So if you can't share, one of us can help you if you want to, if you want to forward your stuff to us.
Yeah, let me try. I think I, oh no, it wants me to leave the meeting to do it. No, we're not doing that. Let me just send it to somebody who wants to volunteer and I'll send it to you.
I actually have it up. I can share it free.
Okay, I think it might, Allison, have changed from that. Oh, okay, then I don't. I'm going to change, I'm going to send it to you right now. There were just a couple little last minute changes that were made. So one second. Let's see, I think I sent it to you earlier, right, Alex? Okay, so I'm going to forward this to you right now, Allison. Let's see. Okay, let me know if you got it. Thank you guys for your patience. Sorry about that. So I'll just start by talking a little bit about the amended budget. So amended budgets are due if we have to do, if we go over ten percent in any one fund. We do expect to go over
We do expect to go over 10% in the education fund, most certainly. And I'll talk more about that in just a little bit. So amendments are due by June 30th of 2022. But I just don't feel comfortable waiting until the end of the year. I think that now we've had a lot of time to meet as administrators and I've met with principals and we've had time to really discuss as team members our needs and kind of identify some of those unknown COVID issues and related costs that we ident, that we didn't know in the beginning of the year. And so with that being said, we've, I feel very comfortable with us coming with an amendment now. And so we will be doing the tentative budget presentation today. And then we'll have the budget displayed publicly at the board office at the district, I'm sorry, the district office for the remainder of this month. Thirty days. And then we'll come back to the board meeting next month, seeking for adoption of the amended budget.
Samantha, hold one second because I don't think Allison received the document.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I received your facilities update, but not the presentation for this one.
Okay, let's, let me try one more time then. Sorry. This is like, you know, never the fun part. So, okay. I think I have to re-save it and then send it to you.
Allison, I just sent you the, the updated one that Sam sent me today.
Thank you, Alex. It's not.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Allison. To the rescue. Okay. All right. So you could just, I'll let you know, you could just, next slide please. Okay, so the, these are just some of the budget parameters that are normally included in your budget, budget presentations here for the district historically. So we know that we have to operate in an academically and a fiscally solvent manner. And so the objective of our budget is to provide the greatest educational opportunity for our students within the constraints of our available resources. This administration has worked very hard to formulate the budget to comply with this objective in mind, as well as to align to our current strategic goals. And next slide, please. On January 11th, that's at this board meeting, I'll be asking to approve the tentative amended budget. This does not mean that the, the board is approving, is adopting the budget or just approving a tentative budget and it may change before next meeting. Although I do not actually anticipate that occurring. If there are any changes on February 8th, we'll have a public hearing. And I will inform the board and the public at that time of any changes. And then be asking again for the adoption. All amendments are due by June 30th again. So this is going a little bit early. Next slide, please. So this comparison table was also in the board packet. It's a little small and hard to see on the screen here. But it really talks a little bit about the changes that have occurred between the fiscal year 21 audit, which just was completed. The fiscal year 22 original budget, which we had in September, and then now the amended budget. So looking towards the right column, those are the net position is the surplus and divided or the surplus over the deficit. And so on the, in the AFR, which is the actual audit, not the budget, in the actual audit from last year, the surplus was $537,000 over the expenditures. So those were the revenues over the expenditures. In our original budget, we projected to be at a deficit of 857,000 about. And the difference between that and the amendment is that now we're expecting to be or have our, our revenues over our expenditures, our surplus over deficit to be actually over by 2 million, a little bit over $2 million. So next slide. So kind of just a summary of the changes. If, if we look at the original fiscal year 22 budget, the revenues were expected to be a little bit over 25 million and the expenditure is a little bit over 26 million and that surplus deficit and surplus was 857,000 approximately. In our amended budget, we actually have an increase in our revenues. And, and that is about $862,000 and that comes directly from a revenue source, which was not in the original budget, and that was the property tax that is no longer going to be abated by the property tax grant. So we kind of talked a little bit about that last month when we talked about the levy and we talked, we had the community member ask, why is it going up? And that is going up because we no longer have the, the grant for this current year. And so that is, that has been added into this revenue projection. The expenditures went up about 2 million and we'll talk about that a little bit more. And so I'm projecting the actual surplus over deficit to be a little bit more towards 1,000,000.16, okay? And then just kind of like a little bit more on the top there that change, when I say change of 4 million, change of 4 million in revenues and expenditures. That was in the original budget, what we expected to be the changes from the prior year. So, okay, next slide, please. So some of the changes, you want to know really what those were. Okay. And so the changes were salaries that were charged to expired grants or salaries that were not adequately included in grants. So we've talked a little bit about this before too, where we, it's really important that annually, the business office, as we roll over into a new fiscal year, that we are analyzing all of our grants and in collaboration with our administrators to make sure that anytime we've added salaries in those grants, that those people are either staying in those grants, right? Or if they're being removed and their salary account numbers are also being changed at the same time. We had two new positions that were added that were not originally in the first budget and that was additional registered nurse that we are looking for. A night shift custodian and additional special ed and EL teachers. And then that our new Laura Lee, who's come on, our administrative assistant for CIA. There were also some prior year expenditures that took place that really kind of caused us to need to go over budget. Prior year expenditures are things that were purchased for last year prior to June 30th, but paid after July 1st in this year's budget. We also had some COVID related, and I will say we've put in place some, some systems now to help support everybody so that prior expenditures are not going to be paid in the next year. COVID related staffing, extra duties, supplies and materials. I don't think I need to elaborate. Technology infrastructure, we've budgeted some more money as Allison alluded to a little bit ago. We've had some unbudgeted capital repairs, most, most importantly, NTSD. Almost a million dollars that the board approved to pay them for their capital projects was not included, included in our original budget and now is. And actually that, really that almost million dollars to NTSD really does represent the majority of this change. Okay. Unbudgeted or stimulus to the school economy. It's not like we're given a ton of money, but we have increased some supplies and some purchase service as much as we can from our COVID grants, just to, so that we're not saying, you know, no to everything at this time because we're tight on budget. But that we're able to support our staff and our administrators when they want to try some new things right now. Because we know that this is an unprecedented time and we might need to do things that we really didn't expect to do in order to make things work. I hope that was said well enough, but moving along. So the IFT classified staff are going, are in negotiations and we do expect retro pay to them, which was not originally budgeted for. And the last one is an increase to revenue and that one I already discussed. Next slide, please. So the business office has continued to do some work that around correcting some of the issues that we saw that led to poor budget calculations and also in just correctly calculating our budgets. So we've reviewed all of the grants, as I said, we created a shared real-time grant account database. And so I've shared this with like CIA and Angela has her version. Principals will be up next to get theirs and essentially as grants are amended, they're being corrected in eye visions and then in the database with the account numbers in real time. We've maximized all of our current grants in collaboration with everybody essentially here, the whole team. So make sure that we're aligning to our needs and we're fighting for the best prices on a daily basis. We're also ending purchasing, like I said, for the current school year in May. So we'll be working with everybody to budget properly. And then we're, we're working to create a shared real-time salary and benefit account so that we can give better and more accurate information about our current open positions, the, of the, and the salaries for our filled positions on a consistent basis. Next slide, please. So just our beginning fund balances, they're about the same. This was, I think, the error that I, I don't see this on my side. It actually has the real, the numbers in here. In the board packet, I think it does have the actual numbers. I can read them off for you guys. Let me just pull my copy. I have a hand. So the fund balances for us currently are 36 million, $30. We have about 12 million in the ed fund, about almost 6 million in our operations and maintenance fund. 2 million in our debt service, only 400,000 in our transportation fund. We have a little bit over 2 million in our IMRF social security liabilities fund. Capital projects has a little over 4 million. Working cash is almost 6 million. Tort is 1.7 and our fire and safety is 1.4. Okay, next slide. Let me hope the rest are okay. Okay, so I, this was kind of an important slide. I just wanted to point out that this is a comment from a business manager in Wheaton who is really respected in the business manager field. And this was in the IASBO Winter 2021 School Finance and Budget Update publication that came out to all business managers on perspectives of the profession right now during COVID. And essentially he's saying the same thing that we're saying, which is that it's really hard to be specific on budgets and adhere to them when you really have no idea what the future is going to bring. And COVID put us all in that situation. So because most districts couldn't properly budget for those things like remote learning, quarantining, support nurses, custodial staff and whatnot, subs, supply chain distributions, huge, you know, CPI increases. So essentially most districts are expecting amendments and that, that's what this says. We have made it clear amendments will most likely be necessary all the way across the board. So just using this to point out that we're not alone in this and this is, this is, we're just ahead of the game. Next slide, please. So our revenues by fund are about 26 million. Again, I talked a little bit about the increase there and that was from that property tax grant that we no longer have and we will be receiving that money. Next slide, please. Revenues by source, we're looking at about eight, 60, I think it's 69% are coming from local, very similar to our original budget. And from state, we have about 21 or federal, we have about 21% and state, we have about 10% of our revenue. Next slide, please. Our expenditures by fund, you can see the majority of our money is coming right out of the ed fund. Okay, that's about, that's, that's the majority of what we have. And then next slide, please. Moving, here are the expenditures by object. So I think this one's really important for everybody to look at and to understand a little better. Our salaries are about 12 million, which is about 57% of our educational fund. And we only spend about 4% on capitalized equipment. And then we're spending 1% only on non-capitalized equipment. That means equipment in between the price of $500 per item and $2,500 per item. So not too much equipment this year being purchased. Our supplies are only about 1.5%. Purchased services are a little bit over 21% and our benefits are about 8.9%. Next slide, please. O and M by object, it's very similar. It's mostly salaries and benefits, but we have more in services. Because obviously for O and M, we have a lot of different contracts for maintenance such as, and our cleaning contracts, things like that are included as well. Next slide, please. So transportation, this one doesn't have much in it as far as expenditures by object go. It's mostly services. We're paying to all town. And then there's a little bit of supplies and salary and benefits and salaries are actually related to our transportation, what's called our transportation director, which in the past was paid towards, was used towards our buildings and grounds director. But in the future, we have a little bit different plan and we'll be sharing that with the dis, with the board soon. So next slide, please. Expenditures by object overall, you can see the majority of our expenditures are in those red bars. They come from the ed fund. And then the next slide. This one is the ed funds kind of breakdown and this breakdown isn't by object. This is by function. And function, we have a couple of different functions, but majorly there's instruction for students and then support and then teachers, right? We, we also do work with teachers or provide services for teachers in support of instruction in that function. There's support services, which includes like our social workers and our nurses and our psychiatrists or psychologists. And then administration, that would be superintendent's office, principals and other district administrators. And then business central support services, those are other operations and buildings and grounds, things that might be paid from the ed fund. And that would be like phone service, one, and our water bills, something, some of those bills are paid from our ed fund. And then community services as well. And so you can see the majority of our fund, our expenditures from the ed fund are going straight into instruction for our students. About 8% goes to supporting our students, 10% goes to administering it. And, and that's essentially, I think, important to know. Next slide, please. So this is just the original deficit. It was negative 857. And then next slide. Here's where we are. It's negative 1,001.6 approximately. And that, it actually all came from the ed fund for the, for the, I think it was almost all of it came from the ed fund, the change. That was that 960,000 for NTSD. And then next slide, please. Our ending fund balances are about the same as the original budget, which is a little bit over 37 million. They are considered to be pretty healthy fund balances. And then next slide, please. Do I have another one on here, Allison?
That's the last one I have.
Okay, that, questions then? I guess that was the last ones. Any questions? Okay. All right. Well, thank you guys for your patience on that. Really, really appreciate it.
So just to be clear, that's the sort of, the, the tentative, you'll, we'll be getting like the final version later on down the road. So yeah, I would just say to the board, you know, spend some time looking it over. So if you have questions specifically for Samantha, you could, we could make sure that you get those to her.
Yeah, it's displayed, President Miller has displayed in the district office as well. So if anyone wants a chance to take a look at it and we're going to have Ruth display it on the website. So it'll be available for inspection.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Well, you're still on tap with the financial update.
I'm going to go, I'm going to go, now I'm going to really go faster this one. Okay, so just slow me down if you guys need me to at all. So for the finance update, for, I just want to say that we are currently at about 44% of our revenue collected and about 77% of our budget expended or encumbered. So that's why, another reason why we've come to this amendment today, this amendment, amendment tentative amendment, amendment presentation. All of our fiscal year 22 expenditure and periodic reports for our grants have been submitted. The, I talk a little bit about the levy adjustment in my finance update and you guys can read more about that in, in the in the, in my, I'm sorry, in my update. But the levy adjustment is essentially additional funds, which the county is going to give to us. I think it's 262,000 approximately for our district. And we have the option to abate that. And if we do decide to do that, we'll have to have that done by April 1st. At this time, I'm not recommending any abatements because we are expecting to to end the year at a deficit. But again, that conversation is, will take place in the future. Also, the American Rescue Plan for Homeless Children and Youth has come out and we are not eligible for an allocation. You have to have at least five. You have to have at least five thousand dollars in homeless education funds allocated to your district. Based on your Title One, um, current allocation, and we were just under, I think it was like forty eight hundred. So what we did was we formed a consortium with some of the surrounding districts, and that will allow us to receive that five thousand dollars in funding. It's District Seventy, District Seventy Two, and District Seventy One that we are going to be joining together with. The property tax relief grant was submitted the other day, and although we don't have it this year, we did request nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars for our taxpayers. And it says eight hundred and sixty in my report, but in the final request, it was actually nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And so hopefully we will save that, and I'll be coming back to the board with more information on that. And that's all.
All right. Any questions for Samantha? All right, um, wait, I'm losing track. Okay, Samantha.
Okay, so I'm gonna have Nikki kind of help me with this one a little bit, but I'm just gonna give a quick update on what we've done to address the concerns at Middleton. So the mice, we had a concern right away when we looked into the mice a little bit further, that some of the construction in the area was actually driving the little guys up. Out of the streets and into the school, and so that may be a cause for a little bit of a surge in addition to the typical winter issue. We had Anderson extermination come out, and they set a lot of traps, put a lot of bait out. We plugged every hole. We made sure that those holes were not plugged with things that could be gnawed at or chewed at, like plastic. And so at this time, we've been told by buildings and grounds. And then I believe Nikki can confirm, we haven't had any sightings of any little furry friends as of recent. So hopefully, this has been resolved, and buildings and grounds is continuing to work on some of the tasks like weather stripping doors and windows. And keeping our indoor garbage cans lined and covered, and making sure that our garbages aren't like overflowing outside. So we're doing a lot of work to keep those mice out of there. And so one of the things we are kind of asking staff to do is to just keep track of your food that's in your offices or in your classrooms. And keep it in containers that are sealed and try not to leave any food out. And so moving right along, we have the windows over at Middleton. The, the concern with the windows is that the seals are all popping. These windows are a little, almost nine years old, and the warranty, they, they really shouldn't be popping the seals. And so the, the windows themselves are different than the window system. And so the architects came out with us a few weeks ago and went through the building. And right now, we're in the steps of working with the manufacturers of the window to identify if those defects are isolated. To the seals, or if it's the actual system itself. Once we know, we'll be coming forward with a proposal for how to best fix that. Tentatively, we're looking at some of those super large, huge windows that are too heavy, being replaced with smaller double hung windows. Which allow for more ventilation, and there's a lot more information in my Middleton report in the packet on that. The lunchroom on there.
Sorry, Sam, before you move on, part of the window issue was also having kids be able, kids and teachers be able to get out. In an emergency situation.
So that's one of the things we did discuss with the architect. And we do have to really look at what our overall recommendations from them are going to be based on whether it's the window system that's having the issues with the splitting. Or if it's the isolated couple of windows, because if it's the window system, it will change completely how we're, we'll approach that. If it's the isolated windows and we're able to do some repairs and replaces in that, some of the things, ideas, we're gonna have to come up with other ideas. But one of the ones that was just initially tossed around are, there are these like fire, kind of like escapes, like ladders that they can put on the windows. And those, some school districts have them, and so those are fixed, and then they would drop down in the event of an emergency. Again, we could ta, we'll talk about that when we get to a more formalized plan, but it absolutely was discussed. And we are looking into what the correct solution for that is.
Okay, great. Just want to make sure that it didn't get missed. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Did you say the windows should still be under warranty?
No, I said they should still be working properly, but they're out of warranty.
Oh, okay.
We're only nine years old, so we shouldn't really be having a system, window system issue. It looks like there was some improper installation. So that's gonna be, that's gonna be something we'll address, but we're looking into that, and I will have more information on that forthcoming. And then the lunchrooms, we walked through with the architects, and they have the same recommendation. They do not feel comfortable recommending the tables that come out. They're actually not a best practice. Current concern that, that we were about, or on the square footage of the space, if we put the tables out, one, we're now changing the use of the, you know, of that gym. And it's gonna be really costly if we decided to turn it back. If kids are playing dodgeball and they hit, hit a table, what happens is the table hit them in the head. You know, and it also reduces the square footage. We can have less people in there, so just not recommend it. But there were some recommendations kicked around. Those are gonna be forthcoming. It really includes one of the best recommendations by the architects, which they're putting together options and plans for us to look, to look at. You know, as a board and as a team of administrators, and that will occur sometime in the next few weeks. There, we're finishing the bid for Middleton's bathrooms walkthrough and steps, but as far as lunchroom goes, that's next up for them to plan. And it's looking more like the suggestion will be to remodel the current lunchroom over at Middleton. And to take some of those classrooms adjacent to it to make a much larger, more functional lunchroom. And then would be to have a small addition in a, in a different part of Middleton. I don't want to talk too much on that today because, again, that plan will be forthcoming. And Nikki, that's. I have, is there anything else? On the Middleton updates that you want to talk about or that you think that I might have missed?
No, I just, I sincerely appreciate the communication, the communication prior to a board meeting to let me know what's going on. So that we can collaborate and be on the same page. No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So that, that's all unless there's any questions, other questions.
So if it comes out that it is an installation defect, and I know there's, they're not under warranty. Is this company, are you in works with this company to figure out how to make this, any adjustments? Something that is more their responsibility than the districts?
Absolutely. We'll take every single action possible, going through our old records, you know, to see what we can, what we can find as far as in our contracts with them. That might assist us in that process, but it, you know, also anytime we're having installation occurring. We're gonna be getting those things certified moving forward. So it's really important that we're doing that as we're moving forward. And yes, to answer your question, we're absolutely doing our best to make sure that happens.
Again, Samantha, thank you for wearing multiple hats in the district. The past couple of months, we really appreciate it. So thank you so much and for really addressing these, you know. These issues at Middleton. We really appreciate it. So thank you. Item O, Finance Committee Member Selection. This is just a quick update that we will be sending out per, this was actually a recommendation at the last board meeting about. Perhaps sending out a postcard, so we're working on sending out a postcard to everyone in the district. About this position opening up on the Finance Committee. And we will also be, you know, putting it out through social media and so on and so forth, but we really wanted to cast a wide net. And thought that that was a good suggestion to get the word out. So the new deadline for applications is in February. Just to make sure that we have time to get the, the mailing out and time for people to submit their resumes. So we're hoping that, you know, folks, if you know someone who lives in the district, who you think would be an asset to our Finance Committee. Definitely encourage them to check out the website when we update it and are to look for the postcard in their mail. All right, moving on. Item P, Superintendent Evaluation Document Review for Possible Revisions. So. It is required that a school, one, you know, one of the primary roles of the school board is to. Hire and evaluate and work with the district superintendent. For a number of years, you, you know, we've, every year we've done a superintendent evaluation. For a number of years, we've been talking as a board about updating our evaluation, making it. Making the evaluation more reflective of what the, what the board's capacity to know is. Rather than folks who are on the ground, like the principals and the teachers. So we have an evaluation form that Carla Arias and Bush Ramiwalo worked on putting together. We're also gonna be digitizing that process, so using it as a Google Doc instead of paper and pen. And so at this point, we just wanted to share that evaluation with the community and see if there is any final feedback. From the board on that evaluation tool before we begin the evaluation process, which happens throughout the spring. So that document is in the. Is in, or docs, yeah. So I don't know if anybody on the board had a question. We, it, you know, I think the board has seen it as a Google Doc. This is a kind of PDF version of it. I think just looking at it myself, the discussion that we had had last about. The evaluation tool was to actually change the terminology of the. Ovals, right now it's listed as distinguished proficient developing and needs improvement. I think we had talked about actually mimicking the. Grading system, our standards-based grading as exceeds meets. Does that, am I remembering that correctly? Was that a discussion we had? So we would basically be ta, you know, using the exceeds, meets, needs improvement, does not meet. I guess other. So I think that would be the one update I see. But in terms of the actual content of questions, I don't remember any other updates. Anybody else on the board have any comments?
Emily, I can fix that and have it over shoot probably tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah, and just so the folks who are, who are listening in and for the note, minutes, you know, we, the process is the same as it is every year. We will conduct the board review of the, each individual member will complete the superintendent evaluation on their own. We then come together, share our findings, and then the secretary, I believe. The board secretary drafts a final report, which is then shared with the superintendent. As a final evaluation. And then moving next year, now that we have our new tool, next year we will move to a model where we will do both a mid-year and end of year evaluation. Which we've been, yes.
Can you just explain for the community and actually for our, I think our, our, our administrators? You, you supervise Dr. Hightower and evaluate her, but does, does, is the five essential survey? Does anything correlate to her role, or do we send a staff survey out at all? I'm just curious.
That's a great question. If I'm remembering the five essentials correctly, there is not really anything related to the superintendent's. Performance in the five essentials. During the time that I have been on the board, to my knowledge, and maybe Nancy can speak to this just because she's been around longer. That, that I don't think that there is an evaluation process. That's done by the administrators with, with the superintendent. That is a great idea. And Nancy, do you have any?
No, I, the five essentials is not, you know, doesn't really look at the superintendent's role. And I have never been involved or had access to a, a tool that was used by the administration or teachers. Like to review or, you know, to give feedback on, on performance for superintendent.
I mean, I, I think it's a conversation to be had. I think it, you know, one of the issues with our previous. Tool that we use for evaluations was there, you know, a lot of the board members, previous board members and current board members felt like there were just some areas that like were. To use the terminology of school boards, like too much on the dance floor, stuff that was like more day-to-day operations that we wouldn't. We could not evaluate, so we were, we would have to say like, you know, do not know, or, you know, not applicable. And so we weren't able to evaluate. So one of the things we did with this tool was try to make it much more, you know, sort of big picture, systems oriented. So I, you know, in terms of evaluating our, a district superintendent on the day-to-day running of the district and the relationships. That's not something the board is really looking at because we don't see that on a day-to-day basis. So I, I think it's definitely something that should be a discussion amongst the administrators with Dr. Hightower about. You know, what that would look like. I know Dr. Hightower's worked hard on revising the, you know, the, the tool used for principals. And it's definitely been another thing that, you know, we've talked about in bargaining with the paraprofessionals and custodians about making sure that they're, you know. That, that they have a tool that they feel like is properly evaluating their performance and fits with their job description. So I think it's something that we can work towards. I don't think anybody, I don't want to speak for the board, but um. I personally wouldn't have a, a problem with that, and I think it could be beneficial. I think at the end of the day. Because the board is the, like, that's our one job is to be the like. Em, employer or supervisor of the superintendent, we'd have to like, figure out what that tool actually looked like. And, and what its purpose was. But it's also something I'm sure we could reach out with the Illinois School Board Association and ask if they have models as well. I don't know if anybody else on the board wants to. Comment on that.
I mean, I just think that we have so many new people to our district. That if you've seen something in other places, that kind of speaks to kind of some of the questions that you're asking, Nikki, it might be something that. To share, you know, to kind of begin those conversations.
And, and I'll add, I mean, I think this is one of the reasons we wanted to, just to talk about how much I love board docs. Another reason we, you know, invested in board docs is one of the, there's this really great feature called the meta feature where we can actually search. Like school districts, other school districts that use board docs to see what kinds of tools and evaluations and, and other public documents they have. So we could also do a search on board docs to see if other districts in the country have, have some kind of tool along those lines. Any other comments or questions about the evaluation tool? I will say, one of the other things that we, and we'll be putting this up on the website, is that. One, one of the new things that we've done to help with the evaluation processes also set. Some, you know, superintendent expectations and goals for the year, which we have not had previous. During my time on the board. So, you know, I think that, that is also, you know, using those goals that we set. Will inform the evaluation process as well. And we'll be, we have a sort of streamlined document that we can have uploaded to the website so that the public has access to that document. All right, moving on to item Q, Classified Staff Member Union Update, Collective Bargaining Negotiation Status. Just, we had a round of negotiations. We're making a lot of progress. I think we're very close to wrapping this, this up. We're excited about it. It's been going, it's been going well. And I think both sides are eager to, to come up with a final tentative agreement that they can bring back to their membership. So that continues to move, move along. So item R, Future Possible Agenda Items, Other Discussion Items. Do we have any agenda items that board members would like to add to the February agenda or future agenda?
Yeah, I mean, I know, you know, given that we're in this adaptive pause and all the, the stuff we talked about with, you know, cleaning, it's been maintenance and. And I know we've talked about this, and it is the cost, I'd love to know the cost of bringing this in-house. And I know it's something that we've talked about, but I think we could, if we could get some actual numbers and do some cost comparisons between. You know, and obviously want to do it right rather than doing it fast. And I think just putting that on an agenda for the future to discuss the realism of that.
So, so not necessarily. So so not necessarily for the February agenda, but just to get it on the, maybe get it, we can, um, oh, that's, you know, getting the finance committee up and running a meeting. So I think that'd be something we could discuss as a finance committee and then bring it to the board. Um, yeah. Um.
I also don't think this is a February agenda item, um but something I just think I want to circle back to later um based on Sam's report. Um and then um Principal Tammer's report about Middleton and lunch and knowing that we have some some limited options if we're gonna, just kind of getting out in front of maybe what some of our needs are going to be to start, you know, S Y twenty-two, twenty-three, um because I don't necessarily know if we're gonna be able to build an addition. Um, but you know, by then, and so just kind of some, you know.
But you do it in like six months, right?
I mean, sure. Let's just throw it on. I'll spend all the money, I told you. Um but just.
For the board to build the addition. See, we didn't tell you guys that.
So just, you know, to kind of, you know, figure some of those things out, so maybe we can have a better or smoother year next year, because I don't see a lot of some of this COVID stuff maybe might linger a bit.
Yes, very lingering. Anything else? All right. Moving on to section five, committee reports and outside organization board representative ports. Um item A, board equity committee. Kelly.
I don't wanna. Um, so um pretty brief board community report. Um, the only thing to report, December is a pretty quiet month. Um but on December thirteenth, um, there was the first community roundtable um that occurred, um and I attended it. So to update the board, um, the meeting went really well. It was um well-attended. It was well-run. Um it was about an hour long. Um kudos to Dan Schwartz and Marty and Del. Um, it was a, it was a super effective meeting. Um, a couple of things that I wanted the board um to kind of know about, a couple of questions that came up that as board members, as we are being questioned by the community about like why we're doing some of the things or what exactly we're doing. Um, there was some confusion around um whether or not um the EAC, I'm not exactly sure what the question was, I'm just gonna be honest. But um whether or not the EAC was a new committee or Del was a new committee or if everything that we were doing were brand-new. So just to kind of clarify some talking points for the board members as we are talking and outreach with our community, um, you know, Del was, has been pre-established now for, I want to say, maybe upwards of like four years at least. And so it wasn't something that was new, but um maybe we need to do a better job of it kind of explaining that this is something that's been in place. Um that the EAC committee was established after our audit. Our audit was done um school year twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. And so one of the questions that came up was, you know, like, kind of the why, why are we doing this now? So a lot of the what of the why of what we're doing came from our findings that, you know, we discovered in our audit. Um, another thing um to update um or to share out is that um for school year twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one, Del um met and was working with um our third-party um Dr. Dubiel to kind of work on what we found in our audit, to kind of build out those strands. Um and then we created this parent advisory group, um which our December thirteenth meeting was our first share-out. Um, and so just kind of want to clarify that, you know, this is work that's been ongoing and in pro- in progress and that the December thirteenth meeting was our first, you know, public share-out. Um, which is in line with our, both of our strategic plan of, plan goals of academics and community engagement. Um, so if people are coming to you and kind of asking, you know, where all this is coming from, that's kind of a timeline or a rundown. Um, I want to give a um a special shout-out to Dan Schwartz who filled in a question about classroom libraries. Uh, one of the questions that also came up in the meeting, um, there was some confusion about like diversifying of classroom libraries and who those classroom libraries will be available to. There was kind of some misunderstanding about like maybe I libraries only being accessible to certain groups. Um and Dan did a great job of explaining about, you know, the need to update our classroom libraries so that students can see themselves, they can see their friends, and they could possibly see people that they wouldn't need necessarily um maybe come in contact with um to kind of give them a broader perspective of the world. Um, it was a very eloquent way to answer. Um, what could it be a very challenging question? So Dan, thank you for that. Um, and that's all I have for you tonight. Does anybody have any questions for me? Dan, do you feel like there's anything else I needed to add or anything that I missed?
You did a great job.
Thanks. All right, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you so much. Um, item B, board policy committee. We did not meet, so we have nothing to report. Um, item C, Ed Redd. Um, Ashley was not able to make it and um don't believe she didn't have anything to report. Um, Dr. Hightower, did you have anything to add for Ed Redd? No. Um, no. And TD, uh, did you want to say something?
For Ed Redd, I said no. I joined their um steering committee. We talked about some um potential considerations as far as education and funding, um but it was a very brief meeting, and I believe we have another one next month.
Thank you. Uh Carla, N T D S E.
No new, no new updates. Our next meeting is on Thursday.
Okay, great. Um, PTO, is Karen on the call?
I am. Can you hear me?
Wow, Karen, dedication.
I know, right? I think I'm gonna have to like try to see if I can get further up the agenda in the future. Um, I only have one thing, uh, I have two things to report. One is that we are gonna have a PTO meeting next Tuesday um via Zoom, um as all meetings are kind of tending to be right now. I am sending the information to that in the chat so that hopefully we can get that out on the website and other places for um our parents and guardians in the district. And then the second thing I have is that um I doubt any parent or guardian gets this far and hears me say this, if they watch the recording. But if they do, I promise that my meeting will only be one hour at the most, just one hour. So that's, that's my guarantee. Those are my two things. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Karen. Um.
The best. Thank you.
Uh, finance committee, uh, we have not met yet. We are gonna set a meeting, and we're in the process, as I said earlier, of starting the member selection process. Um, apparently there's no old business, so moving on to new business, um, I need a motion, right? Okay, hold on. I'm trying to pass. Okay, um, I need a motion to approve the personnel report.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report.
Seconded.
Who seconded? I'm sorry, I missed it. Kelly, a motion made by Carla. Um, sorry, seconded by Kel, Kelly. Alex.
Uh, member Amawala.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Jacob.
Member Jacob.
I said yes, sorry.
Well, we didn't hear you.
Member Arias.
Yes.
The motion to approve the personnel report passes. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one audit prepared by El Eder Casella and Company.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one audit prepared by Eder Casella and Company. Seconded.
Motion made by Carla, seconded by Maureen. Did we have any other discussion about the audit? Okay, you can call the roll, Alex.
Sorry. Uh, member Arias.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Jacob.
Yes.
Member Amawala.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes. Uh, the motion to approve the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one audit repaired by Eder Casella and Company passes. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two tentative amended budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-two tentative amended budget. Seconded.
Uh, motion made by Carla and seconded by somebody. I don't know, Kelly. Uh, any discussion or questions again on this? No. Uh, you can call the roll, Alex.
I'm sorry, real quick, I'm sorry. I just, another shout-out. I know it's late. I know we're all tired. But Sam met with each of us individually. Dr. Hightower supported us one hundred percent to like revisit our entire budgets and get us what we need. So I just have to say thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
Member Amawala.
Yes.
Member Arias.
Yes.
Member Jacob.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes. The motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-two tentative amended budget passes. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the resolution of Ed Fund Line Item Transfer.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution of Education Fund Line Item Transfer.
Second. Motion made by Carl, uh, member Arias, seconded by member Wolfinger. Um, Samantha, do you want to speak to this?
Um, yeah, so we're just transferring um funds that we currently have in our current budget. We don't, we don't have time to wait for the new budget um next month to be approved and be on display because we have nursing needs right now that are immediate at Middleton. So um we're working to bring in a contracted service, and then we're just transferring those funds which are sitting currently in salary and benefits for the nurse that is no longer at Middleton, and we're putting those in purchase services.
Because we're going through a contract agency to purchase the services of the nurse.
And we would be able to just use the new budget to do this, but we we won't have time. So because the need is, the need is so immediate.
Okay. Are there any questions for Samantha Samantha about this? No. Okay, Alex, you can call the roll.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Amawala.
Yes.
Member Arias.
Yes.
Member Jacob.
Yes.
The motion to approve the resolution of Ed Fudge. Start that again. The motion to approve the resolution of Education Fund Light Not Item Transfer passes. Thank you very much. Need a motion to approve the Gordon Flesh Copy Printer Contract Addendum for twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I'll make a motion to approve the Gordon Flesh Copy Printer Contract Addendum for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. Seconded.
Motion made by member Arias, seconded by member Jacob. Uh, Samantha.
Um, so I'll let Allison speak to this one a little bit. Dr. Acevedo.
Okay.
Or so right now, we are currently working with two companies for our printing and copier needs. Um, we work with COTG and also Gordon Flesh. Gordon Flesh controls our larger copiers, so ones that um building secretaries use to get out memos to families and that teachers also use. And then COTG is in charge of our smaller one-off printers. Throughout the year, we've had a lot of trouble getting responses from them when we inquire about initial contracts, when we need toner replaced in order to get teachers the um access to the printers that they need. We've reached out numerous times, both through the technology department and through the business office. And so we would like to consolidate into one company that we'll work with for our printing needs, and we would like to go to with Gordon Flesh. They currently provide data every year um on the printer usage, on money saved by the district, and also on needs that they see. They're extremely responsive. Their customer service is excellent, and their qualifications are very strong as well. So we would like to make the move from using two printing companies to just the one.
The only question I have um for either Dr. Acevedo or for Samantha's, is this something like that we should go out to bid on or because we already have a contract with Gordon Fleish and we have good practice with them, it's fine to just roll it over?
Yeah, this one is exempt because it's technology. So our printers and copiers are exempt from bid. Um, and the pricing is comparable. It's actually um not gonna cost us anything more to really go with Gordon Fleish, and we we kind of just need to um be with an organization that's totally responsive to us and can supply us with the materials and things that we need when we need them. So it's a lateral move, kind of.
All right. Does anyone else on the board have a question about this? Okay, uh, Alex, you can call the roll.
Sorry, hold on one second. Okay, uh, member Arias.
Yes.
Member Jacob.
Yes.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Amawala.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes. Uh, motion to approve the Gordon Flesh Fleish Copy Printer Contract Addendum for twenty-one, twenty-two school year passes. Thank you very much. I hope that makes everyone's life a little easier. Um, item number F or letter F. I need a motion to approve the destruction of audio recordings of closed sessions as stated on the memo.
I will make a motion to approve the destruction of audio recordings of closed sessions as stated on the memo. Seconded.
Motion uh made by member Arias, seconded by member Jacob. And just for any public people still listening, um, this is a typical destruction of video or audio recordings um that date back eighteen months or longer. Um, so we will still have all of our audio recordings eighteen months now, back eighteen months. So are there any questions uh about this? All right, you can call the roll, Alex.
Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Jacob.
Yes.
Member Arias.
Yes.
Member Amawala.
Yes.
The motion passes um to approve the destruction of audio recordings of closed sessions as stated on the memo. Item G, I need a motion to approve the release of closed session minutes to be made public as stated on the memo.
I'll make a motion to approve the the release of closed session minutes to be made public as stated on the memo. Seconded.
Motion made by member Arias, seconded by member Jacob. Are there any questions about this? The background is that the Open Meetings Act requires that a public body periodically review written minutes of all closed sessions. The decision to open these minutes to the public or to keep them closed must be made an open session. The current recommendation by the superintendent is to keep them closed as they're still related to ongoing collective bargaining and personnel issues. Are there any questions? Uh, you would like to call the roll, Alex?
I'm confused. So the preference of the superintendent is to vote no on this?
Yes, because these are very recent. Um, so the memo states that um it requires us to consider the opening of closed session, and I'd say half of them are regarding collective bargaining that is still in process. So we haven't approved the, the contract hasn't been settled, so it wouldn't be something that we would want to make public until after the contract negotiations are resolved and um the contract's been voted on by the membership of the union um as well as some recent, you know, ongoing personnel issues. Are there any other questions that it goes from, it dates from January twelfth, twenty-twenty-one to November ninth, twenty-twenty-one? Okay, Alex, you can call the roll.
Okay. Member Miller.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Jacob.
I guess I'm confused, because it says on the thing to approve the release of the closed session minutes to be made public. So if we're voting yes, aren't we approving that it's released?
As it's been listed on the memo, and the memo in the third column says the recommendation is to remain closed.
So we're approving the memo. Okay, yes.
Member Aria?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
I also thought we had to vote no, but yes.
It is a little confusing. But I was saying, so the motion to approve the release of closed session minutes to be made public as stated on the memo passes. Item H. This is not anything we need to make a motion on. This is a discussion. Under the Biden administration, the holiday Juneteenth, which happens on the 19th, is it the 19th? Does it move around? It's the 19th of June, yes?
It's the 19th of June. It doesn't.
It doesn't move around. That we would add that to our standing holidays in our policy. Because this is a change to policy, it needs a first read and then a second read. The change to policy is merely keeping consistent while one with our statement on equity and our resolution for racial equity, but also because it is now a federal holiday. So it would impact actually very few staff of the district as it falls in the summer. It would not impact student attendance. But it would become a paid holiday for staff working throughout the summer. Are there any questions or discussion about this? Okay, so just to be clear, at the February meeting, we would vote to approve this. I now need a motion to approve the consent agenda under which there is no discussion.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion made by Member Aria, seconded by Member Jacob. Alex?
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Member Aria?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
The motion to approve the consent agenda passes. Thank you very much. It is now that time where we get to have public comment. So I'll remind anybody who would like to make public comment to please put your name. Well, let's just be real. You can just raise your hand, because we're a much smaller group now. So just raise your hand, and public comments should be three minutes or less. Please state your name for the record. Yes, Emily.
I was referred to as nobody earlier, but I am Emily. I do attend the school board meetings in person. I just wanted to say that I was really sad to hear about Nurse Karen resigning, and I really thought she was incredibly kind and reassuring during a very difficult time for a lot of people. And I just wanted to put that out there. I was also really disappointed to hear that there was not a school nurse all of last week or Monday of this week at Middleton. And I hope that that will, you know, get resolved with the contract. But it's scary to send your kids to school, and I have a school nurse there during COVID, in my opinion. Like, the assistant principal and the principal is just so busy doing so many other things. I don't even know how they managed to juggle that as well. And my other comment was that I know that we are supposed to be getting daily updates on the dashboard. Today is almost Wednesday morning, and it would be really great to see the numbers from Monday, at least by the end of day on Tuesday for Middleton as of testing. I don't know if that's possible, but, you know, it's like, you want to check and see what's going on, you know? So it'd be really great if we could try to get those numbers at least by the end of day on Tuesday. And then, since there is no school on Monday next week, I'm just wondering if the Middleton students will then test on a different day or if they won't be tested at all next week. I wasn't sure if that was put out there or not. And also wanted to say thank you so much to Mrs. Caston and Ms. Alice, who I think did an amazing job today, sending out a lot of information to the students and responding really quickly when we had questions about what special is today, because I wasn't sure. And I was like, try to help my child figure that out. So it was, they were amazing with pivoting into remote. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Are there any other public comments? I have to squish over. Okay. It's 11:30, and we're not really supposed to respond to public comments, but I think Emily asks an important question about testing next week. I just didn't know if Dr. Hightower had an answer. We can make sure we definitely send out a communication if we don't have an answer right now.
Yes, they were testing on Tuesday. We've requested all of the materials from Shield already. Alex sent the application in, and it was approved. So we should have all of it. We'll have to do the testing in-house. Alex knows how to use the scanner, and so we'll be able to do it.
Great, thank you. So that'll be, Middleton will be on Tuesday, and then McCracken will remain on the, McCracken and Meyer will remain on the Wednesday schedule. Great. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to refer to you as nobody, Emily. I actually was just saying to Dr. Hightower that you're at every single board meeting, so my apologies, I do notice. All right, so calendar review. In our next board meeting, as usually scheduled, second Tuesday of the month, February 8th, 2022. There are no other items to review on the calendar, so I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will second that motion.
Motion made by Member Nelson, seconded by Member Jacob. Alex?
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes, I almost hung up on you guys.
Yes, bam.
Member Aria?
Yes.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
The motion to adjourn the meeting passes. Have a great night, everybody. Try to get some sleep and stay safe and healthy. Thank you, everyone.